2017.
Oh, second half.
Have motion second for approval over eight to me on Tuesday, December 12th. Julie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Queens and Arrow?
We had one claim that was questioned, I believe, by Mr. Napperstadt. I appreciate that much very much. And Courtney, would you like to apply the, um, one time?
I had a question on the claim to CHI for the CDL physicals. Troy had two because of the way they bill us. He gets a physical every year and then goes to sixteen and finishes his physical the same day. So, I would all ahead question.
Make a motion to approve claims and payroll.
Second.
Motion is second to approve claims and payroll. Julie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Brian? Aye.
Manor report?
I handed out your, um, audit, year-end audit came in today. Thought I would make sure I got it to you guys. So, if there's any questions, once you have time to review it, don't hesitate, give me a call. Sean C. and associate Steve Palacki has been doing our audit as long as I have been there. He would like to come out to the council at some time and give a presentation. It's been years since he's been out here. Just kind of give some basic history of what's been going on and kind of explain the audit a little bit better. I thought we could wait a couple of months. The weather gets nicer, they come out from Grand Island. Or if you wanted a special meeting or something like that, we can talk about that and line something up in the future here. Probably a twenty, thirty, twenty-minute maybe presentation or something like that is what I would feel that he would provide for you guys. The only other thing I came back, um, tonight for is regarding our generator. Um, you know, we made motions months, months back regarding Altwin, um, getting the generator and Boyd Electric doing the electric work. Um, and then gets doing the building. The building's done, the electrical work, uh, is pulled to, to the building underground work is done and then we stop because we're waiting for the FEMA grant. I reported last month that the FEMA grant was not given to us. Um, we did look at a possibility of USDA grant, which is a loan program actually, um, and figured out the mathematical factors of that. Over thirty years, we would owe about thirty-eight thousand for that loan. Um, Susan took a look at the public, um, grant and we just reported here a little bit ago, basically looking more into that grant. They would only give us that grant if we met a lot of criteria, but also if we didn't have any resources, funds, couldn't obtain a loan from a bank, different things like that. So, kind of out of all avenues of different grants that are out there. Um, I know Altwin and I have visited again this week. We are eight weeks out once we place the order at least for the generator. And then Boyd taking time to come up and finish all their work that they need to do. Um, I guess I need to know from the council's point, um, it will be required or is required to have a generator. I know the city is up against a lot of different avenues here in the near future with their electrical and things like that. Um, if anybody has any other suggestions for grants, it'd be great to go after, but I think we're about out of resources besides moving on. But that's up to you guys as a city council. Like I said, it is required to have one.
What's the possibility of going to a bank and giving them a loan, no interest right now?
I don't.
We get, that's.
I won't need it. If you look at my financials, I've got it sitting there in savings or CDs or something that, to that nature.
Are you doing that if you wanted to tap into Altwin?
If I think if you look at all my revenues sitting there and resources, we, we're good for a while. Um, I don't know, the city sales tax has built up a little bit more in the last couple of months. I would go right and use that as much as I could towards it. Um, we're probably looking two hundred, a little over two hundred thousand yet, two fifteen, somewhere in there that we would need to spend. Um, Altwin said, you know, it's gonna go up. He thought maybe just slightly or maybe even go down. Um, I'm guessing Boyd's, it was only good for thirty days, now that's gonna go too.
Bruce, since it's not on the gen, we can't like approve to buy it tonight, but it's not on the generator.
It's been all previously approved.
Well, I mean, previously.
Except we need to see if we got a grant.
I have certainly not reviewed all the past motions. I don't know if you've got anything on the book other than the looking for financing.
That's all I can remember.
I have twenty-one thousand seven hundred sixty-six ninety-nine.
Sales tax.
Well, that's not probably current though.
That does, on January first?
Which that's a December packet, so we're one month behind. We wouldn't have that yet. But yeah, twenty-one, I mean, we'd definitely put that towards it.
Well, it's gonna be a need, I know. I guess we're gonna have to something if you think you're, you know, withstand it, I guess.
I think you're at a spot where, where I've been hesitant before to recommend depending on what's out there. But you're gonna find yourself looking at the requirements coming in and, and not only requirements, some issues that may be brought up within CPBD in the near future that we may not be able to, you know, help, but get a generator for the manor. We may be looking at a few other things too. So, you have no previous motions or seconds in the past year that allows you to go forward. But what you can do is put something, not tonight, but when you put it on the February, to go forward with a, um, look at what we have and the financing that maybe you're able to start. Cause you don't have it on the agenda tonight. But she's right, we, you need to start.
You hired these guys for these individual little projects, but what's out there for real contracts now? Have they completed all the work they've been hired for?
Yep.
So, you're looking for a contract to go forward with the main event.
Yep.
I think like on Boyd's, if you go back in your old packets, it had oh fifty-three dotted lines there and we did one through thirty, you know, whatever numbers they needed to bring it in, we, we had that to go. And the generator, I know you, when you go with Altwin, it's just those final motions of putting in place, you know, another thirty days and another thirty days. We're now looking down the road and we keep holding off. But I do understand it's not on the agenda. But like Mike's right, it's not how or when, it's, it's required and we're just out of options.
I think two thousand and eighteen is gonna be a make or break all the way around. And then she has, I mean, with the manor being a facility of that type, but we're looking at the possibility of generators on Everwell, generators and backups on things that we're gonna need that previously were not considered, uh, depending on how the next two months go with some of the discussion with North Central.
And I do expect state, we're in the window right now, so we can go any day until up to fifteen months. Um, the questions they're gonna ask, the law logs the city can provide out when that generator was started on a monthly basis and all those type of things. And what they'll say, we might give it efficiency. I'm waiting for that, there's no doubt about it. And then I can at least say, here we go. It's in the progress, it's ordered, it's whatever you guys feel. But I want the community to understand that if and when it comes down and the city can't turn on these generators, the public is welcome. I mean, we've got a lot of people in town that are in oxygen and things like that that live at home and they're still going to need a place to go.
Can you see if the bids, or if they have to get new bids before the, you know, contact both of them, you know? And we'll get on the agenda next month?
We can just refresh, we just like to go back and, let's just go back to scratch without looking at the grants and looking at that and what, what is it that's needed? And how that's gonna look, right?
Call them tomorrow and have them on the business. The other things I have on here is the brick, um, brick work update as of today. Tonight when they left, they thought it would be all bricked, um, keep it warm for a couple of days in there and get that mortar to dry good. And then they'll take down that tent looking thing outside and get that back up and going. It went well. Employee health insurance renewal, um, ours is March first, ours went up thirteen point two percent, um, so not bad at all. We've made a few tiny adjustments. Uh, I need to go back to the board. Uh, we are gonna bid out just to see, we haven't done individual applications for years, see if it's something a little bit better. Um, and we'll kind of go from there. So, we had a little time, but otherwise we're looking at staying right where we are.
Julie, I just have one question on your claims. I've seen you have two time clocks on in December you paid for.
We paid, we bought a new time clock and then it's the software.
Two of them or just?
Just one and the other one's all the software agreements for the year.
All right. Thank you.
Police chief?
Hang on, hold on, what's the, um, response time is supposed to be on that? It's second officer to get to the first officer.
Really? No. Guideline, I guess, I don't.
I just didn't know if it was ten minutes, fifteen minutes, if there's.
No, there's no limitation.
Okay. Cause I know when there was an accident in front of our house, um, with my neighbor, it seemed like there was no backup until the very end. So, I didn't know.
I responded when I was contacted. Once they, once the sheriff's office called me and told me what was going on, that's when I rolled.
Cause the sheriff's office was there, ambulance was leaving, everything was done when you got there. So, I didn't know if there was, you need to be there within ten minutes for traffic to help out the other officer, help out the other driver, you know, the driver, pedestrian. If there's something in our policy about if you're on call, whether it be you or any other officer, what's the response time?
What the situation was, was that my officer was involved with witnessing the accident. And once that point was brought across, then that's when the sheriff's office was requested to come up and investigate the incident, being he was a witness to it. And at that time, they requested that I go up there.
Cause we paid you guys for on call, right?
When we are on call, yes.
I guess I would like to see a little bit faster response time because we had the power out on that street. We had city guys working to divert traffic to coming up to my house to get blankets, everything like that for the pedestrian that got hit. The teenage driver was in our vehicle. I mean, emotionally, I would really like to see the second officer that's on call to be there in a timelier fashion.
There is no second officer on call. The officer that was on duty was on scene.
Correct.
Once it was determined what was going on, that is when the sheriff's office contacted me, asked police chief to go up there because my officer was involved with it.
Okay. Because the sheriff's department was there, the ambulance was gone with the pedestrian, everything and then I just.
The ambulance had already taken the patient to the hospital, yes. Sheriff's office was not there before I got there.
Okay.
Because when the sheriff's deputy pulled up, I walked up and talked to him out on the street.
Okay. I just, I was watching the whole scene and it seemed like everything was going down and there wasn't any other officers coming. So, but there was a lot of city workers who were volunteering their time away from, you know, the electricity outage, everything like that. So, I just, I guess I would like to see a little bit improved performance to get, for situations like that when we have to have the street closed down and the, the weather is bad and the power is off, if somebody could be responding.
An off-duty officer sitting at his private house is not contacted for any type of backup unless he is contacted for backup.
So, Jerry should have contacted you stating that he needed.
Sheriff's office contacted me once Jerry explained to him what type of situ was, to her, what type of situation he had. I don't sit at home with the scanner because I listen to that.
I don't.
So, I, I had no clue what was going on. I didn't know there was a power outage. If I could determine that and read minds, I, I would have a heck of a going here. But I had no idea what was going on. I heard the ambulance page, I do get those.
Mm-hmm. Exactly.
But then once the sheriff's office called me and requested I go up there, I went up there. I don't know how much faster or predict into the future that I can get.
I'm, I'm just, if, if you guys get a call, I know that a pedestrian's been hit and the power is out and there's only one officer on the scene and the street needs to be shut down. I would think that the other officer that is on call should be helping with traffic duty.
He's not on call.
We're not on call.
Well, on the sheet it says on call.
No.
When they are on call, they're on call. But when there's an officer on duty, the other two officers that are off duty are not on call unless they are called out, unless they are contacted to come to help on a situation, whether it be an accident scene or whatever.
I, I guess, I, I would just like to, you know, there was one officer there and I, I saw what he was doing and he witnessed it. And I was just thinking, why is it there are more people here to help?
And there was, once he got ahold of the sheriff's office and said, I need more guys up here.
I would've thought that though you being two blocks over could've been to the accident sooner than the county sheriff's office in the winter storm that we were having. I'm sorry.
Once I was contacted, I went.
Okay.
I don't know how much clearer I can make it.
Okay.
Because like I said, I'm sitting at home off duty. I have no clue what's going on until they called me and they said, this is the situation you have. Jerry is requesting you.
You heard it on the scanner.
What?
Except you just admitted that you heard it on the scanner.
No, I did not. I said I got the ambulance call on the pager. I do not sit at home and listen to a scanner.
Okay. I, we could go about this on that. I would just, when there's a street closed down because of traffic or because of an accident or something like that, I don't know if the officers need to say, hey, we need additional backup or something because.
They also have the fire department doing traffic control, which is also part of their duties. So, it was taken care of. The scene was pretty well taken care of, so.
I just, when I see I'm on call, I was just under the assumption that a second officer came to help out. Because it's on call.
If we are called, we will go, yes.
Bruce, maybe you need to explain the on-call and you need to explain your, you aren't actually on-call at the same time as another officer, if that's correct.
Correct, yep.
On-call and there's nobody.
There's nobody rolling. Yeah, like, you know, if somebody takes a vacation, timeframe on.
Yeah.
Somebody has to cover the calls if that individual's gone. And that's where your on-call starts coming in sickly, you know, stuff like that.
Okay.
Bruce, we see you have four dogs at large and seven parking tickets. Were there any tickets issued for that?
Yes.
Four dogs at large and seven parking tickets, parking tickets, are there any tickets involved in those?
Getting the dog at large?
Yeah.
Not this go-around? I mean, it's just like yesterday when you got a dog at large in your neighborhood. You know, it's out there running, getting up and did see it. And, you know, talked to a couple of neighbors down in the neighborhood, nobody seems to know who owns the dog.
Then on the parking tickets, is there some tickets involved in that or is it just?
There was a couple, yeah, written out.
And have you checked on putting that in your report in the paper?
Talked to them about it, yep.
Okay.
Cause that's been two months now that we've been waiting for that.
I can't control what he puts in his paper. So, I, I discussed it with him. So, it's gonna be interesting what he puts in tomorrow.
Anything else, anything for Bruce? Sarah? Thank you. Susan? Was that adopted?
I don't know, discuss that once again.
Was that adopted?
I don't know if it was adopted per se, if it's a council direction, or if you did bring it out, but, you know, if you wanted him to stay, you needed to stay.
Ready? Yes.
Okay.
It's not a book, Darren.
I know, I see that.
Took the weekend off, half off, so I did you a favor.
Thank you.
Um, update on the hardware store. We had an investors meeting December nineteenth at Mary's Restaurant. Um, at the end of that meeting, it was decided that we, we couldn't put together the two hundred five thousand dollar capital that was needed by the end of December with just the parties that had come to the first two meetings. Um, so, we had some discussion about the need to advertise, uh, the project to the whole community and hold a public meeting at a future date. I'm kind of hoping that happens sometime in February. But so for right now, it's just on hold. Um, real estate, I did mention to you guys last month that there was a couple interested in purchasing a vacant lot in town. Sean C. and J.L. Dean Harrison are here tonight to put in the offer for the Sims place. Bruce Curtis obtained the quiet title deed to that lot on December twenty-first, so the city owns it now. The Harrison's submitted their offer in writing to the city yesterday and it should be in your packets. Um, the real estate agent is also here tonight and will assist them in negotiating the offer with the council. Um, as I pointed out last month, any new development in construction that occurs in Plameu shows growth and is good for economic development. So, I'm still pushing for that lot to go for as little as possible. It's not.
I was just gonna tell you, we get our packets on Friday.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess Courtney got your copies then? It'll be one, it's on the agenda. Ecap, the University of Nebraska emailed us sample list of survey questions for the committee, the steering committee, to review on December tenth. The steering committee will set a time the third week in January to get together and review and finalize the survey questions. The target date for this survey to hit the community is February fifth. Um, once that survey goes out, it's out in the community for a month and then it comes back. Uh, the university processes the results for a week or two and then they start coming in and do the community conversations. We're looking for March for those to start happening. Park board grants, I received a call last week that we received the Cooper Foundation grant I wrote for Schuler's Park. Um, the check was in the amount of two thousand dollars and we picked it up yesterday. And then our local Midwest Bank branch in Plameu also donated two thousand dollars to the park project and they gave us that check yesterday as well. I received a phone call last week from the Nebraska Demon Parks Department. They informed me that the award letters for the LWCF grant we submitted in October will be announced on January nineteenth at the Commissioners Board meeting in Lincoln. And that was the grant we applied for, for eighty-two thousand eight hundred twelve dollars. Um, additionally, the Peter Keewitt grant is due this Friday for funding in March, so I'm submitting a grant to them in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for the park. And I'm also submitting the Dodery Foundation grant at the same time, also in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. If, uh, all those grants go through the way they should, we should actually be overfunded for this project, which would be good. Um, the IEDC is the International Economic Development Council. I took a webinar of theirs last month titled Trends in Supporting Your Existing Businesses. Had some pretty good ideas in that that I'd like to take to the LB eight forty board about some things we can do locally to help our chamber. Um, also, I was selected last week to participate in nationwide volunteer efforts to help with national disasters across the United States. Uh, teams of economic developers from across the United States will respond to a disaster area to help that particular city's economic development department get their businesses and infrastructure up and going. Um, the commitment is one-time a calendar year. They can call you out and it's for a maximum of one week, but your participation is voluntary. So, if it's not a good time for you to leave, you don't, you'll just get thrown back in the pool for maybe the next disaster. Um, for me, I think that might be a good learning experience if you get sent to, you know, a different place to learn how they do things. Um, and on the miscellaneous side, we have, I don't know if you guys have heard anything about the community building, um, but Michael Holton and Dr. Thor, I believe, will be talking to you about that. So, all I did for you guys was I included my notes from the steering committee. They went and visited a couple communities, buildings and asked them about their processes and how they went through that and did that. So, you guys have those notes, um, to review and they'll talk about the rest. Questions?
Where are we, where are we at with the park fundraising around twenty-nine?
Twenty-four, five.
Is that with the four thousand?
No, we have to add a four thousand.
There's a, there's an old, um, anyone's written grants for a long time and I mean, she's curbing her enthusiasm, but I'll, I'll help her out a little bit.
Don't mix me mind.
Yeah, I know. Doing grants, uh, for twenty, thirty years, nobody calls and tells you what an announcement is unless you're gonna get it. So, you, otherwise they'd be calling everybody there is and you're gonna have some pretty disgruntled people, so they're pretty selective. So, I'm doing this and the nineteenth is around the corner.
Keep up the good work, Susan.
Raleigh, you gonna go now or again?
Ed.
Ed? Mike, you gonna go now or again?
Uh, one, one thing, since we have a few people out here, that this might be opportune time just to discuss very briefly what occurred on, was it Tuesday? When was our, how was it?
Friday.
Friday. Friday of last week. In, in that way, there is no doubt, the paper's coming out tomorrow and maybe Burke will have something, have a nice, I don't know. But on, let's back up, on Thursday, December twenty-eighth, I received a phone call from Keith Harvey. And he finished out my two thousand seventeen by saying that if they wish to go to an agreement, uh, they will, in essence, ask us, direct us to mothball and shut down generation, emergency generation, period. Can't have both, very simple. It always know, this is black and white. Uh, I, at that point, said we will refer to paperwork that will be given to our attorney later on to discuss. That may not occur until February. The reason I bring it up right now and I want you to understand as we go into discussions in February is we had an outage on Friday that was a NCPBD transmission line and they needed to take care of it. There was a glitch, if you guys were here. I was not, I was in Illinois. But if you were here at two-thirty, the power surged and, you know, glitched and some, several computers and things like that went down. It takes some time to find it. About four o'clock, I received a phone call from Todd Zimmer from North Central Public Power to tell me that if I felt that power glitch, this was why and they needed to take care of it. I said, no, I did not feel it where I was at, but I'm hoping that you got ahold of the others. And he did, he got ahold of Troy and Raleigh. I got on the phone to talk to Courtney immediately after. That night, they asked us to run the generator and so they could go fix the problem. And, and it was a request, but not really. We didn't have a lot of choice and hopefully everyone that attended the basketball game and things of that nature. Dr. Al, I tried to get ahold of you to let you know whether or not, I was unsure whether I was even going to allow our power generator to run based upon some of the, um, issues that are going on. But I figured because of that and other things, you might wanna have power. Julie might wanna have power for her soup feed. This causes an issue. This is an issue that, you know, if they can't and Bruce and the attorneys at B can't work it out, the way my recommendations could change all the way around based upon any time and I, I forewarned council for the last two to three years of the same thing. Two or three years, I was against a lot of this for the reason, the minute North Central starts to dictate the terms on our power, you know, it is still our power regardless of what anyone else says, that could be, that's a very, pretty dangerous ground. You know, we needed that power. It was cold on Friday, there were a lot of things going on and the generators, hopefully everyone saw they worked just fine. We exercised them, what, with less than a week prior to that, just to make sure that they were capable. So, and I guess, and I'm about to divert the rest of the, of the report, but I just want you to be aware as we talk about this, very concerned. He did call this morning to tell me that they will do everything in their power to fix all those lines that are out there before an agreement can be reached and we mothball our generators. So, they're already making some assumptions that shouldn't be there. So, you will get to talk to them in February with a joint board meeting, but you need to be aware that, uh, in, in my mind, they got caught with. in, in my mind, they got caught with their pants down, and the city staff and the city crew responded in light to help keep what we consider our power, our gem, and I never intended to lose emergency generation, even with an agreement. That was never part of the discussion for the last two to three years, and the last thing I heard in two thousand seventeen is you will, not you may, you will. So, rest of the report, I will go to the end.
And Mike, just got the comment, Mike and I have visited with that, and that's where we come back to the generator issue for the manor, because we have a contract where the state of Nebraska says the city will pick up our generator, so when and if we mothball it, we've gotta have ours up and running before you can sign that kind of agreement, or we got a problem with the manor, or by licensure.
Next month.
Next month, we'll have, I mean, and it's things that can be talked and hashed through, that's not the problem, but you need to be, FYI, you need to be on the front end, because things are taken for granted, and Plainview residents and citizens are, and they take it for granted, I take it for granted, that if we have power down outside, we just power up and continue like normal, that is not normal. There's not a very many towns in, in this area, if you go down, had that happened in Creighton, or Osmond, or Pierce, you simply would've been without power, and that's the way the, quote, their world works, it's never been ours. New Year's Eve, five hours. Mm-hmm, so, anyway.
Moving on, number five, mayor appointments, manor board, it's got Chris Foner on here.
Yeah, there are several, would you like to, I don't know if he came tonight or not, he wasn't going to, but I don't, you can do it carte blanche, but you, you might wanna sit there and do it, um, you might, you could do it the whole thing at once, but literally, probably better, I'll do it one at a time. So, Chris Foner, he your manor board, your motion.
He's agreed to it.
Everyone that I had mentioned has agreed.
Okay.
Ed, did you hear, who is Chris?
The.
Chris Foner, yeah.
Our savior's minister.
Pastor Donna's husband, Chris Foner, she used to be a rung, Donna Runge, I believe.
I make a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Chris Foner to the manor board.
I'll second it.
Have a motion a second for mayor appointment to the manor board for Chris Foner, Julie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Brian?
The pool board member is Jen Hotson, she's agreed to, um, re-move and come back.
Make a motion to approve Jen Hotson to the pool board.
Second.
Have a motion a second for, to approval of Jen Hotson to the pool board, Julie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Brian?
The tree board is returning Brent Muller and Larry Peterson, both of their terms expired, and they agree to come back.
Well, make a motion to appoint Brent Muller and Larry, the tree board.
I'll second it.
Have a motion a second for Brent Muller and Larry Peterson to remain on the tree board, Julie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Brian?
The park board is returning Candy Johnson, she wants to see the park project through, so she willingly said yes.
Make a motion to approve Candy Johnson to remain on the park board.
A second, Dan.
Have a motion a second for Candy Johnson to remain on the park board, Julie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
And the housing board, last but not least, Jean Thompson, who's been on the housing board and will return, if appointed.
Make a motion. Go ahead, James.
Make a motion to appoint Jean Thompson to the housing board.
Second.
Have a motion a second for Jean Thompson to the housing board, Julie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Thank you, Mike, for doing that.
Yes, yes. I don't know how many will accept you, I don't know, Courtney knows the RSVPs.
Uh, line six, line eleven-six, discussion action on Keno grants for Highway twenty hot rod?
You know, Mr. Thor will come up, Dr. Thor will tell you all about it, and reminder, the only thing is my duty, and it's never to play devil's advocate, it is more to, and Jim and I had this conversation, so it's nothing that, you know, he's hearing for the first time. Um, just to let you be aware of what you have for funds at the last Midwest grant statement, that eighteen-five in the account. As you look at these two, um, individual grants, they were somewhat put together, um, I don't think you have any, Jim will tell you about the hot rod event, but just kinda keep in mind, some of your precedents that you, um, don't want to start, and you can't start, so they'll let you go from there, but you're called no matter what.
Uh, I wanted to thank you for your grant last year, um, it was a real lifesaver. Um, the purpose of the two grants, the first grant, uh, a-again, the money's just simply needed because the car show is not large enough to become self-sustaining. Will it? I'm hoping so, when we get larger, we increase the due fees from twenty to twenty-five dollars an entry, so, you know, if you do the math on that, our, our major cost is the trophies and the prize money, so you're gonna five grand in trophies and fifteen hundred in prize money. Um, and then, the Car Council magazine that goes out to five states, twenty thousand plus copies printed by the O'Moore World Herald, I mean, that's a thousand bucks. Uh, we have nine hundred individual hot rodders that we mail to, well, actually twelve hundred with the new list. Um, that's about fifteen hundred with the printing and the mailing. So it goes on and on and on, but the, the purpose of the second grant was actually, uh, I became, Mr. Holden made me aware of the, the fund situation, so I'm not expecting to get the full amount, but, uh, you know, whatever you feel would be necessary. But the second, uh, request was basically because I found out that, first off, I don't do car shows because I like car shows, in fact, I only went to one other car show than ours. I went to a lot of car shows to hand out the flyers for our car show, which meant I only fished twice last year. So I put in a lot of time for it, my staff puts in a lot of time for it, the real reason I'm doing it for is trying to help the chamber come. There's thirty-four dollars in their account, they can't even write a letter for help. So last year, our attempt was, have a big barbecue, bring everybody to town, get some money in their cother, so I wouldn't have to be back here again. Well, the rain kiboshed everything, kinda threw us out of kilter, trophy presentations up about forty-five minutes, and by the time the last trophy was handed out, the rain was twenty minutes, and you guys know the rest of the story. So, last year was kind of a strikeout for raising funds. Um, we're blessed this year to have Joseph Hall off America's Got Talent, uh, he polled twenty-four hundred people four years ago, divots of twenty-five dollars a pop. So the chamber has to decide what, where, and when to, to try to make some money off of that, he's coming in. Um, I paid for half of him from last year's funds that I got from you guys, and the sound system that you're still enjoying was from the funds I got from you guys. And I bought the food for the FFA, which was right at a thousand bucks, that they sold all the burgers as a donation, and they got the money back, so I went to the FFA. So, the purpose of the second grant is very simple. Uh, Mr. Curtis, not this one, the other one, uh, told me, I asked him, what do we, what do we do for advertising for Climb Days, I mean, the festival, what do we do? He puts it in his individual papers that he owns, once, a small ad, they print a few of these and they hang them up in the local town. That's it. So, the purpose of the second grant is, we need to do some advertising, we don't have an ad in Norfolk paper, I mean, they don't even know we exist. So, yeah, there's no money, you know, in the chamber, and I'm not asking on behalf of the chamber, but I'm trying to move the community forward, do something good for the community. You have to have an anchor of something, and the car show seems to be a hit, you know, I'll continue to do it, put my whole heart into it, but, you know, give me the best response you can back, because that's what it's for, you know, but if we want it to be successful, we gotta have good weather, and we gotta have people here. So, you know, if we can get twelve hundred, fifteen hundred people here at this concert, and whatever they charge, that would really be a shot in the arm for the chamber, and we could do some good things with the chamber, because other chambers like in Norfolk I was on, you know, they have almost a million dollars in their cother. And they can do a lot of stuff, so, and I understand we're a small community, and, and I actually feel bad about asking for it, because I know that's not what it's intended for. But, uh, if you could see around it and help us out again, and hopefully I won't have to come back for, you know, more than that, but, so, give it some consideration, thank you for your time.
Thanks, June.
Thanks, Todd.
Do you remember how much we gave you last year?
Five. I mean, that, that's, that's fine, I, that amount, I would, I would, that's the need, the want is above that, but it's for the advertising. Uh, Mr. Curtis told me if you wanted to do the local papers, you're looking somewhere around the twenty-eight hundred dollar range, to have him do it, I already checked with him how much. But, you know, that's a one-time, you know, whatever.
Do you want us to give you separate?
Well, before we decide anything, is there any way we can use LB eight forty money for something, or, I mean, is it? I understand.
Well, you've got that busy, the economic development right now, which is not impossible, and that's what this is.
Probably the only.
You have to get the committee to consider it.
Yeah, and probably the only, and, and they might, I mean, the, the, the only stipulation is that the LB eight forty statute is meant towards small business, you know, business, it was more of a, not an individual, a town, I, I think you can get by and call a lot of things.
That's what I'm thinking, I mean, you know, there's all those people, the towns are towns, all businesses.
Well, and I think, Courtney just handed to me too, and I would like to see, um, and this, I think, and Doc, you'll probably agree with this too, that we got a community club that sits out there and, and just sits on money, um, they, they need to be contacted and, um, and see if they can help support the community, that's what they're, they're for, and that was the original intent when we actually began that club. So, I mean, all of those above, and I, and I'll tell you, Doc is true to his word, uh, the car ride thing and was absolutely fantastic, and I will help Doc in every regard, regardless of what you decide to give him, I'll help him fundraise for the rest, if that's so needed, so, I mean, that's part of the commitment to the city, to the chamber too, but you also have an obligation to the, the fund, not to deplete completely without knowing what two thousand eighteen, and that's, when I told Doc this, there's no secret, they just told me, it's eighteen-five in there, and he's asking for ten.
Yeah, I have no hard feelings with anything, and I understand the fund's low, and I don't, I don't wish to deplete the fund, I'm just asking you to consider what I'm, what I'm asking for, because I don't know where else we can get it, so.
And I will go to LB eight forty.
I think, I think we need to go to LB eight forty and, and see, you know, what they would do, I mean, I'm not opposed to going half of this, another thing I think we need to do is we need to probably change our bylaws a little bit in this, because this is specifically not for operating, it's, you know, more for movement and stuff, so, I mean, legal law, we probably should do something in that order too.
I'm agreeing, I mean, I think there's, you know, you gotta be careful what precedent you set, what the, the bylaws are out there. I, I do think both of these deserve, have some money, and I will be the one tomorrow contacting whomever Courtney guides me to contact with the community club to, to say, hey, what's up? LB eight forty, Monday night, so.
I don't, I don't have to do the advertising, you just, nobody does it, I'm just, I'll just do it, you know, if you put me so, if, you know, if somebody else wants to do it, as long as it gets done, we gotta have, we gotta have butts in the town to make this thing successful.
I mean, Doc, I think you've done a wonderful job last year, I was very impressed over the previous years, the way it's run. Brought a lot of people down, probably more cars there in one year than we've had in all our car shows. And at this time, I just don't think we can go to the full ten, I mean, that's my own feeling, I don't, I mean, I'm not opposed to five, you know, and to see what LB eight forty would do, I can't, to me, I think they would be, that's an economic development, for all the people, all the businesses.
We can make a fair. I, I don't think that's, from my watching, I don't think that is unreasonable.
Do you want to go that way to LB eight forty?
Yeah, I will.
Give me a call.
I will.
At this time, I'd rather.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, Mike, you brought up that operating cost thing, I mean, you've got that in your, in your requirements, and I, we've discussed that before, I guess, I think you can still, in the first couple of years, or two or three years of an event, call it startup expenses, you're trying to promote it, you're trying to get it going, you're trying to get it self-sustaining. So, you'll, if you have somebody questioning on that basis, that's really the only out, unless you come back around and change your Keno guidelines, continuing ongoing operating expenses are not generally supposed to be the plan, but startup expenses, you're trying to get this thing moving.
Can we ask how much approximately a month the Keno brings in, I mean, we got months out before this happened?
Depends on how many gamers.
I know.
I get, I get a quarterly check, it's around three thousand dollars.
I mean, it had been around five, six, and you could get that pretty easy, but it's down to three.
I think at one time, we were, I know we were over thirty, but last year or so, we've been hit pretty hard, but.
Good, that's a good thing, so, okay, it's down.
I would recommend we, uh, go with five thousand for the Keno grant for the startup of the car show.
Second. Come on, one grand at five thousand, or do you want two, twenty-five hundred pieces?
There's two grants.
There are two grants, unless there's really truly double, like one over the other, but split in twenty-five.
Let's advertise that one for trophies.
So you'd like to, Doc, one or two?
You want one, five, or two twenty-five?
You know, whatever way he does it, he's gonna split whatever he wants.
Yeah, it, it doesn't matter, whatever works for you guys, I can withdraw one, two.
But since there's two grants on the agenda, you've got to make it. That's a few, you're making the motion.
I'm suggesting do a five thousand for the startup, the car show, and.
Eliminate the second grant.
And eliminate the second.
I'll retract it.
Retract it?
I'll retract it.
So we're giving you for advertising, but not for trophies?
That's fine, okay.
You, uh.
You second that, you second, okay. So you have a motion a second for a five thousand dollar Keno grant for advertising for the car show, and Dr. will retract the second grant, Julie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for letting the FFA kids do that as well, the FFA kids?
Yes.
They really enjoyed that, thank you.
Gotta include her in the report.
Uh, line seven, discussion action on open bids for sale of property in three oh one North Second Street.
It was discussed last month, and basically, uh, Susan alluded to it a little bit, we're back to the resolution, I'm sure Bruce has too, uh, we had two bids submitted, both select. I think both parties are here.
Okay, all right. All right. First bid for the property three oh one North Second. It's from Great Wells in the amount of two thousand thirty-five dollars. No firm Chauncey Harrison, okay. And that is for two thousand, correct? Is that all you see?
They're here, they can tell you what the bid was.
All I see is for two thousand dollars. All I see is for two thousand dollars.
Now, let's say the council have, um, the option of A, accepting, uh, the higher bid. B, rejecting all bids, and can you give more and bring it back to the table? Or C, uh, maybe there isn't a C. You got either B.
Just so everybody's on the same page, in past years, when the title was still badly troubled by that old mortgage, which we just got rid of. Well, there had been people who made offers, first for forty-five hundred, and a second offer was seven thousand most recently. But because of those title problems, they were unwilling to close, and we went to the trouble of cleaning that up now. Now that the bank finally proved that they would not cooperate, we eliminated their mortgage by a court order. So, that's, hopefully, title was clear, and you could go forward, but the amount you're willing to sell it for is a question. And as Mike says, you, you, there's no negotiation can happen here. It's accept or reject. And they can submit it to bid next month. If you reject them now, that's your call.
Well, before you decide, uh, just everybody knows the property. I brought a copy of the flat map, but it's the vacant lot, up north, it's a cemetery property. South East King Peterson, yes. I don't know where she...
Yes.
Yes.
On the low, you would show them.
And that's what I...
In, in cash.
Okay.
But, you know, I think you can ask them what their intention was, and it looks to me like it's an offer for one dump. Just mention again in the second paragraph, it looks like it might be a second amount of money, but it's just one number.
So, this is just a thousand?
Peter Harrison's here.
Yes. Is there no negotiation? Because I was under the assumption they could negotiate, and that's what they were coming to do.
Well, I have fear you're mistaken on that question.
The resolution's...
San Luis City property by the published notice and the resolution, it's submitted an offer, council has to accept or reject. That's the only thing that can happen.
Well, personally, I think the lots work more than what we've been offered. On the corner lot, paving on both sides, previously, we had an offer of four and seven thousand. I myself, I would, myself, I would reject it, too, without the rest of council.
With the balcony that goes along with new pavement, I would agree that that lot's worth more than two grand. Still.
Was that right? Chauncey, is it a thousand that you offered?
It was, but I'd raise that.
What, what?
I'd have to reject it, have to come back next month.
Well, that goes with Mr. Wells's seat, too.
Yeah. I would.
I've been trying to buy it for three years.
I don't sure if we put it back out on the table. I don't know what, uh, what everybody else feels about it.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to reject both offers and, what, re-advertise and bring it back next month?
They're already advertised, so just bring it back.
Re-bid next month.
Is it gonna be sealed bid only, then?
Can only be sealed.
It can only be sealed, yeah.
I'll second it.
We have a motion as second for rejection of both, uh, bids for the property at three oh one North Second Street, and to bring it back to the next month's meeting. Julie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Julie's back. By nine in May, discussion action on the one and six-year road plan.
We want to possibly, we have Daryl, I thought I saw Daryl, but, oh, there they are, uh, with Bud's, and leave that one out. So, they can get back to Newnville sometime before midnight. Did you bring the truck up, the garbage truck?
No, we didn't.
This has been, uh, something that's been researched, and we've been looking, I've been discussing with Bud sanitation now for more than a month and a half, two months. And I asked, are they going, did you bring it?
They told me.
Yeah. Will it fit through the door?
Yeah. It was just long rolling in.
We have a display for you. Uh, basically, here's what's happened, just in a nutshell. We are, our volume has exploded, uh, citizens of Plainview. Before, when Besford had it, Ashop had it, it was a tipping for tipping, which really made no sense at all. It was kind of like, they're paying us to pay something, you know, it just kind of went one to the other. So, we eliminated the tipping fee, and the contract has been running very, very well. But we have been watching, uh, closely the volume, and we, we are experiencing, they'll take whatever's curbside. And we're experiencing volume in the way of twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven bags, and, you know, six garbage cans. I mean, you don't have to go far if you want to see it. And, and you'd think they'd run out of garbage sometime. Uh, all, but all you gotta do is go out on Friday. It's already done, so go out on Friday and take a look to see. One of the things we have to do is take and, and put some controls somewhere, because we still pay the volume tipping fee to Jackson. So, and that's at thirty-one dollars a ton. For the most part, everything has been going relatively smooth. Problem is, is it's not, um, cash flowing like it should. Doesn't mean that we're going broke. It just means we, we need to come up with a way to...
Make money.
Curbing, literally. So, this is one of the ways right here. Uh, talking to Daryl, they brought up a tote. Very common, if you've been in other towns and cities, that you can see that they do this. Wayne comes to mine, and I know Daryl, you can name off probably twelve of them, because you do them. But, uh, putting a tote in each one of the residents that we have, they use it. And the cost, and Daryl, why don't you go ahead and talk about what the cost of this, and kind of what your, what our thoughts were? Okay, all right. Introduce yourself and all that.
Good evening, guys. Happy New Year. Um, this was brought to my attention probably three months ago by our drivers, that it's getting crazy up here. And I happen to go back and look at the tonages here from when we first started, from where we are at now, and it's, it just keeps climbing. We're having to go back out and dump. We don't, we pick up other towns this size, and we can fit Tilden and Battle Creek up, when we split those towns in half like we do this, we can fit both those routes on a twenty-yard truck. So, I can't fit this town on a twenty-yard truck most of the time. So, when I'm going back through and looking at this, I, I was like, wow, you know, because I don't have to pay the tipping fee, so I don't look at them, you know. So, here I went back and looked at them, and it's like, wow, we're getting seven ton on these trucks. And I, I can't even imagine paying for that tipping fee, you know, like that, so. And the contractor reads that we pick it up, so that's what we do, so, um, I don't have to pay to get rid of it, so it's not really a big deal to me. But here, we're coming in to try to eliminate this, because the guys, it's really starting to become a problem with the guys. I mean, they're really starting to say something, you know, like this. They're throwing, and it's taken them a long time to do it, so it's hard to crack. So, what we do in our towns are, we put limitations on it. And what works great for you guys is you guys have a transfer station set in a half mile out of town. Same thing with our town. Uh, I own the transfer station, so, uh, the city doesn't. But what we do is, if, in our communities, we supply a tote, that's figured in with the bid of the town, and that's what you get. No more. If you have more, you pay extra, because somebody's gotta pay to get rid of that. Either it's you, or it's me, but somebody's gotta pay. And if I'm doing it for nothing, I'm eating it, I'm losing money. So, you gotta put a limitation on it. If you don't, you're just, this is gonna get even crazier. I mean, I, I think we're up, the first couple of months that we were here, we were picking up ten thousand pounds each time that we dumped. We're up to sixteen, seventeen thousand pounds when we're dumping, and that's all at your guys' expense, so.
That's two ton in a week.
Yes, so it's, it's...
For a half the town.
Yes, for a half the town, yes. I mean, it's, it's getting to the point to where, I mean, when you, when you give and give and give and give, they're gonna take and take and take and take. So, you gotta go back and put limitations on it. I'm not saying that I will not pick up more than that. If they want a second tote, then they can have a second tote, but it's gonna cost them. It won't cost them as much as what they're, it's not like their garbage rates are gonna double, you know. It's just saying, hey, you gotta be able to cover that tipping fee on that end, so.
So, if you have two, two totes, that customer's gonna pay double?
No, no.
One of the things, this is discussion, because I'd like to go back with Bruce in the next month, and we talked about this.
Then you're gonna have to feed their purse.
Well, no, what we can do, based upon the volume and how it would work, is we are at twelve dollars for residential, which is been there ever since I've been around, and it's woefully low if we've been around in most of the communities. Daryl, you know what your communities are, but I know most of them are right around anywhere between twenty and twenty-five a month, if not thirty, depending on how big. That's not what I'm talking about. Twelve dollars, we can go ahead and give every resident that is on the trash system a brand-new tote, and go ahead and take care of our capital expenses, raising it only to fifteen. It'll cost a dollar and a quarter a month for the residences to have these totes, which are fairly nice. Yeah, they do limit you. But one of the things, and I already had a couple complaints, because they heard this word through the grapevine, um, but we have a transfer station. We have never denied somebody coming out to the transfer station if they had an extra bag, and, and we've been able to accommodate that. What we're seeing, when we took pictures of it, is the twenty-seven, twenty-eight bags, and, and it just keeps occurring. This'll take care of it. So, my proposal that is just food for thought, and that's why we're talking, so we can bring it up next month and get it ratified, or a special meeting, is we go from twelve to fifteen. Daryl can bring these all up within a thirty-day, no, this, in fact, he's already said he can have them up by the end of January. We're talking five hundred and some odd containers. Plus, he has enough left over that if somebody would want one, what we need to do is charge an extra five. For somebody to want an extra container and fulfill the purpose of what we need to at least cash flow and to have a service, twenty bucks will get you to it.
I wouldn't have that size, so we kept like all of it.
And I knew there would be people like you and Husker Ag. Seth, you were laughing. You're bringing all your garbage from the Husker Ag, aren't you?
But it's, this, this is what, this question's asked me all the time.
I mean, we recycle. I don't, it'd take me probably a month to fill that.
Yeah, so.
But even if you had one bag.
True.
You guys are down, it's very reasonable.
But as your city, I mean, you sit there and you look at it, because this gets asked me, well, you won't, you'll only take this from me, but that little old lady down the street only has a Walmart bag. You know, there, you can't judge it on that.
When I was little, there was like single...
You gotta have a minimum.
I'd do only the best, yeah, we feed people every month. I mean, I drive around, you could see, yeah, every week.
The citizens of this town are not utilizing the transfer station on their own. For twelve dollars a month, I'd throw everything and let his guys pick it up. I wouldn't think about it.
That's, that, I've never, that's cheap. I mean...
Giving it away.
And you're, you guys are tipping for thirty-one bucks a ton, and by the time that you pull all that in, and you're driving sixty-five miles one way?
Twice.
Twice. So, you're sitting there, you're looking at, you're, you're over forty bucks a ton tipping. By the time you figure in all your overhead, and fuel, that truck, that, that trailer, that loader, I mean, insurance, wear and tear. I, all, you gotta figure in all that stuff. It's just not thirty-one bucks to dump this stuff.
And Bruce, uh, where we come in, where I need to work, and Daryl and I need to work, one of the conditions that we need, and the reason we can do this as cheaply as we can, is at the dollar and a quarter for the actual...
Well, it's a dollar twenty.
Dollar twenty.
Yes.
For the container to come up, just the container, um, but there's a, it, it basically, it's over a five-year lifespan. So, the only thing that Daryl is asking, and I would ask him, we've had no problems in two years, will be two years in February with Bud sanitation, is to work with Bruce and somehow take a look at that contract to make it a five-year. Basically, start fresh. The reason I'd wanna do that is so you don't get into two dollars for the tote. Keep it low, you know, that's better for, people are gonna accept that better. You know, you're talking about a dollar twenty. Uh, over five years for one of those, there's, I mean, you're getting a lot for a dollar twenty, I mean, out of those. We've had these things in Albion, how, fifteen years, we haven't had an issue with them. Maybe break the lids.
Where did I miss the dollar twenty thing? Does anybody know what they're talking about?
Daryl is, uh, basically explaining the cost on their tote.
These, these totes cost, I'm gonna buy them with the whole semi-load. They're gonna come out of North Carolina. If I buy a whole semi-load, which is six hundred of them, and Mike said that's where the happy number would be. If I buy six hundred of them, I will get them discounted to me, and with tax and delivery, they're sixty-three dollars and thirty cents, and that's delivered to Plainview.
You're gonna sell them to the city?
No, they'll sell them to me.
You're gonna sell them to you, and you're gonna cover it out of your contract, assuming the contract price gets readjusted.
Correct.
We're readjusting this to help the city.
But the city still has to change the rate.
Mm-hmm.
We have a resolution.
I'm not changing my rate.
Yeah, you're right, Bruce, you're following. I mean, my recommendation is to go from twelve to fifteen, and, and the reason the three dollar is to take care of the dollar twenty that we're getting in the contract, plus the red remainder of that on capital expenses on anything. We just bought into a new semi-tractor, we just bought into a trailer. Um, in order to cash flow, we need to go twelve to fifteen, and that's only three bucks.
So, do you end up owning them at the end of five years, or is it a customer?
No, they're mine. But here, okay, when I bid a town, say if you guys had me come in here and bid this town, and I was paying the tipping fees. I, that, that is part, that's equipment right there. I mean, some way or another, that's gotta get paid for. That's what that would, that's bottom of the barrel. That's my cost to you guys. I'm not making any money on it at all. It's helping you guys. Now, they're gonna stay here as long as I have the contract. If I lost the contract, I would pull them. Any garbage company would do that. I can't buy these things without, my, my bid that I gave you guys was without totes. If you guys wanted it with totes, the bid would be higher. So, that's how a garbage company, you gotta, you gotta get the money from somewhere to pay for this stuff. So, the only way that that happens is offsetting it onto the customer. And I, when I originally talked about bidding this town, I said, you want it with totes, you want it without totes, you know, we don't want it with totes, we don't want it with tipping fees, so we had to figure all that stuff out. So, the, the, the thing is with totes is that is the easiest way to limit it, because you're gonna have people coming in from the outside of the country. They're gonna, as long as that tote isn't, if nothing's on the side of it, you guys are gonna make your money on the tonages. You guys will be okay. But if you have something on the side of it, somebody's gonna pay for it, and it's you guys. Now, if it was in Clearwater, or Ewing, or you go down the line of two seventy-five, I would be the one paying for it. But in that standpoint, my guys would be ripping those bags open and saying, hey, this isn't this guy's garbage. And the easiest way to find it is a different color garbage bag. But when I come up here to this town and throw garbage, this is the heaviest pound. We pick up twenty-five of them that we pick up in. And numbers don't lie. They're, you, we weigh every load. And like I said, we can go to Battle Creek and Tilden, pick up half of Tilden, go to Battle Creek, pick up half of Battle Creek, and we can get it on easy on the exact same truck. And we're going with half this town, picking it up, and going out there and dumping, and going back out. But that's because you got people, you got two, three packs at People's Residence. And two, and a pack are four of those, so that's equal to a two-yard dumpster. So, when you're dumping that, and you're not getting paid for it, and you're paying to get rid of it, you're losing money. That's why these come in the, to a standard. Now, if you guys don't wanna do totes, you guys don't have to do totes, but you guys are gonna need to put a limitation on what is allowed to take. And if there's something extra, they call us, or they call you guys, you say, hey, Daryl, so-and-so has this amount of garbage, this is the, you know, if they don't have the means to get it up to the transfer station. You, and we'll pick it up, but then you guys need to know what it is, and charge accordingly. That money doesn't come to me, it goes to you guys. You guys are the ones that are paying the tipping. So, this is a simple way to do it.
What do you charge for like your big commercial totes? Cuz I see there's one always on the highway that's just overflowing.
Dumpster.
Dumpster. I mean, how are you gonna regulate that?
Would it be at the cabins?
Oh, Babel's, yeah. I know, I know Babel. Okay, so, for instance, here's the city of Newman Grove, okay? This is how the city of Newman Grove charges their rates. So a one-person household is at thirteen dollars per month. If you are a two-person household, you're at fourteen fifty per month. If you're a three or more-person household, you're at fifteen thirty per month, okay? So that's on the residential side. On the commercial side, businesses without a dumpster are eighteen dollars a month. Businesses with a dumpster are thirteen dollars per month, plus six dollars per yard, per dumpster times the number of pickups per week, and that's a hundred dollar maximum. So basically, what that's saying is if you have a two-yard dumpster, it's thirteen dollars, plus twelve, because it's a two-yarder, so you're at twenty-five. So if I pick that up, some businesses in this town even get it picked up twice a week. In Newman Grove, some of the businesses get it picked up three times a week. We're right there, so we do it. And the city taps on so much a yard, but they don't get charged the double of the thirteen. So that's how they do it. Albion is different. Um, I do know that Albion, on their businesses, man, they're expensive. And I don't get it. I'm I'm saying, we don't get the money, we get the contracted rate, that's it. The the city's making money. I'm still paying the tipping fee on it, but they are making the money on it.
We extensively looked at the commercial properties, and we we did some commercial rates here and there, and Dr. Earl will be one of the ones to tell you, when we had some of these conversations, when he first came in, there was, uh, they pay. If it's Casey's, if it's them, they pay. I mean, commercial rates are high. You know, we're not talking twelve bucks, we're talking two hundred, three hundred, four hundred.
In Albion, that's what it is. That's what the city's charging, not what I'm charging. So, I mean, when you have a volume of garbage, it costs money to get rid of it. And it don't make no sense if if you're. For you guys to sit there and and allow that to come through and come through and come through, I mean, it's the community that's taking the hit. It's not me. So I'm just trying, this was brought up by me, by my drivers, and they said, man, this is really starting to get crazy up there. We're gonna have to do something. Cuz if I don't have drivers that aren't willing to throw all this, I mean, then I'm in trouble. But the guys out at the transfer station, Chad has even told me, he's like, man, where in the world is all this coming from? I mean, the numbers right there, I mean, we're at, you know, five ton, and now we're setting seven ton consistently on these trucks. Like, whoa, what in the world is going on? So.
Yeah, put bringing your garbage in the wrong place.
Sorry, I'm moving, okay? I've got a lot of stuff to do.
So what do you do for the individuals, you know, the other elderly people who do have the one trash bag? Who can't take one of those from their garage out to the curb?
We, well, if you have an elderly person, we go up and get it.
Okay.
I believe we do that already in the community with just a regular trash.
Very good job being very.
Yeah, we do that in all our communities.
The other thing, the thing, put this aside, and I know we've got a fix to be able to move on, but the final thing that I wanna say about this tote, the advantage is with the system that we've had for years and years and not having just bags out there, cans, one wind, and Nebraska never has wind. One wind, and we have garbage all over downtown, this will somewhat take care of that issue in the long run, so.
Well, and what would you rather have on your city streets, this or six or seven trash bags sitting there?
You know, the the cool thing about these things are, in that, uh, for you guys, it's extremely beneficial, rain. Rain is wet in New York area. If you can keep the water out of it, the less it is. I lose probably fifteen thousand dollars a year just on rainwater. So I know when you, I I don't know if you guys have ever picked up a trash can. Where you take a trash can that's half full, and you put seventy hundreds of rain with that? Wow, it's just like a sponge. It's just like picking up a stack of magazines. It is heavy.
If the wet cardboard in there or something.
Yeah, so, you know, and and.
We don't spend a lot of time.
And your guys don't have to pick this up.
No, the truck actually picks that up, it's easy. Workman's comp loves them. You know, I mean, I, we're we're really starting to push for it in all of our communities.
Oh, you got, you just pull up to the thing in the.
Yeah, yeah, literally, yeah, see, and then all these, all these parts are all replaceable. That's part of the service, I take care of all that. That's not at your guys' expense. That lid breaks, we'll, I mean, unless somebody hit it with their car, and they call us and say, man, I ran over my tote. Well, that's a sixty-three dollar, I guess you owe me sixty-three bucks. Yeah, the lip on the truck grabs here, and then there's a bar underneath when it flips in, and then this holds it from falling all the way into the tub.
So instead of, okay, like, when I put mine out, I don't know how everybody else does it, mine on my sidewalk in front of my truck.
Mm-hmm.
So would you have to wheel this out into the street so the truck?
Yeah, they wheel it down into the street, and then they'll put it right back up on the curb.
You just leave it nor, where you normally put it?
Yeah, just leave it right there where you normally put it.
Car driver literally pulls it to the truck, hooks it up, drops it.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, we got a guy right in the back, he'll grab it and wheel it down, and then wheel it right back out, just like he does with the trash can, yeah.
Okay.
So you don't want it turned to the curb?
No, the, well, it even says it on here, the best way to do it is to have this, so when you go up, you can just kick it right down. Otherwise, you're here, otherwise you gotta walk all the way around it, you know, and you do that three hundred times a day.
Actually, when I was working in North Platte, the guy there got out of the truck.
Yeah, but there's an arm that picks it up, but the arm breaks them, and the arm spills garbage. Yeah, so. But we've, we've started, what, two new contracts this year? With towns, and every one of them, that, this is the way they wanna bid now. They don't wanna bid without totes, they want them. So, I mean, it's up to you guys. I mean, this is the best way to control it.
We talked about colored bags, and I've been around cities with colored bags, and it's it's just usually a mess.
Yeah, we're working mainly, now you gotta, how they mainly trash bag, otherwise they won't pick it up.
Yeah, so my community just loves that, I mean, that's expensive.
In round figures, we have to come up with an amended contract and a resolution and bring it back next month. They got nothing tonight.
No, this is your, this is your presentation.
Okay, cuz I saw the discussion actions.
So, the only thing is, is that, I mean, if you guys don't decide this until March, or whatever you guys wanna do, um, we're we're about four to six weeks out from delivery of those. And the sooner I know where I can order them, the better off it's gonna be, the quicker it's gonna be there. So.
You've really got nothing to go on. If you're kind of inclined to cooperate with the tote thing, I think you can go forward with that and kinda get ready. You still gotta do the renegotiation and get the rate straight out. I mean, to me, I think it's the only way to go, cuz you see garbage struggle.
Right, yeah.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's gonna be a, a bad expenditure.
But that's okay with that.
The only thing I gotta say about that is, I think you do a good job, but your timing is always different. That's your rate, you get to set that number.
Yeah, see, we have, Newman Grove used to do a senior citizens price, I mean, every town's different. There's, there's so many different ways that you can price this thing, you know, but when you got, I don't know what you guys charge to sit, uh, uh, Casey's.
Not enough.
What do you charge?
I have the commercial rate, you love how they just channel it, not enough, no, I, it's it's high.
Okay.
It's really high.
Okay.
Casey's gets hit hard, but they take advantage of it, somebody gets hit that hard, takes advantage.
And I will say, if you are worried about the elderly, I don't know necessarily, that's the city's decision. I don't know that you would have to make an elderly person that has one bag have the tote.
That's up to you guys, too.
They would, not everyone would necessarily.
It's up to you, you guys are the city, I'm just trying to help you, that's all I'm trying to do.
I'd probably go two, three weeks almost, I'll fill in those green cans. My wife recycles everything.
Yeah, we wish everybody would do that, yeah.
I would say the administrative part of what I would recommend to you, whatever, is I wish I could do something. Fifteen is probably the rate that I'm looking at for elderly service. Everything above that is probably getting a bargain. Fifteen is probably below.
Or just call one person.
This is something that you don't wanna do. I mean, for for me in business, I don't wanna do this to the city. I don't wanna look at a rate change and say, okay, I'm gonna try to get this thing done as cheap as I can get it, and then six months later, I have to come in and ask again. You know, you wanna be able to get it right the first time, cuz then you're just gonna have, the community's just gonna be in an uproar, you know? If you gotta raise it another fifty cents or another seventy-five cents, you know? So, I mean, the only way with what you guys got setting out there, I mean, there is no other way to do it but put a limitation on it. And I mean, there's, and that is the only way to do it. Cuz no matter, if that thing's full, say if you don't fill it up, but your son, hypothetically speaking, lives out in the country, and fills that thing up for you, you guys are still not gonna lose money because your rate is gonna pay for the tonnages in that tote. It's gonna be there. So you're not gonna be sitting here pulling from here and pulling from there, and it's like, whoa, you know? This stuff is just, the garbage world's getting crazy. These trucks are two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, semis, and now with the emissions and all this stuff, that's all they do is break down. We can't keep our trucks out of Norfolk. And every time you go in there, you're dealing with thousands, you're never dealing with hundreds. So you guys gotta look at your overhead. I mean, you guys got a semi, and you guys got a a a trailer, a building to upkeep, you know, streets to upkeep, all this stuff, so. I mean, he told me fifteen bucks, and I told him, that's where the minimum would be. I mean, if I was rebidding this town, if you guys opened this thing up for bids, you guys wanted totes, you guys wanted us to pay the tipping fee, you guys didn't wanna handle that anymore, that's, your bids are gonna come probably right up there in the seventeen to eighteen dollar range from other companies, maybe even close to twenty. So, I mean, fifteen dollars, if you're gonna do that to all the residents for one tote, and then the second tote at four bucks is what I would do, because one dollar, one twenty would cover the tote, but then you wanna do five, okay. One twenty of it would cover the tote, but then the other money would cover the tons. So that's where you're at. You're not trying to, that second tote isn't where you're trying to make money, you're just trying to cover your tons, is all you, protect yourself, is all you're trying to do. And we, that's how we do it in our communities. We bid a town, that's what you get, the second tote is four bucks. That's how, that's what was in my mind, so, when we do that, but.
Darryl, when we get to this process, I I do think we need to do a little education, because I guess probably my biggest complaint, I mean, you do a great job, my biggest complaint is everybody was used to a timeframe when they used to come.
Mm-hmm.
And I got a neighbor across the street that's sitting there with four garbage cans, that either they missed them, or he got them out there late. And your timing is always different every week.
Well, what day are you talking?
Fridays.
Fridays.
Fridays, yeah.
It's be seven or eight, now there's times I get home from work at nine or ten, and they're, haven't even been there yet.
The boy, okay, that's the boys, so, we will.
I mean, I'm not.
I'm not saying it should be seven o'clock every day here.
It used to be.
But a lot, well, I would say this, a lot of times here, we have tried now for a month.
Some people don't get up till eight o'clock, and they've already went by.
Yeah.
You know?
Mm-hmm. We, the only thing that I can say is this, in between what our contract reads of what what time can we start picking up trash?
Six A M.
So that's when I would have your trash set now. I would never set your clock by, because if I have a truck down.
See, I don't think that was ever in the paper.
Don't, I mean, with the garbage man, don't ever set your clock, cuz if a truck breaks down, we might be five hours late.
No, I understand. And I don't think.
One day, something's going smooth, and we might be two hours earlier than what we know.
I don't think we educated them to start with, because now you could just take it out and get up, and I miss it before.
Yeah, everybody asks us when they get on new service.
Ten thirty now.
You know?
Well, I think some people will set it out, like before.
That's when this will eliminate that.
You go to this, you don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, you won't never have to worry about it. And the greatest thing, it's like, well, what do you do when when the wind blows and it tips it over? It's a bungee strap and a hook, and lock that thing down tight, so. I mean, it's simple stuff, I mean, it's, I'm just trying to help you, that's all I'm trying to do. When it comes to time, sometimes we're gonna be early, sometimes we're gonna be late. If they have it out by six o'clock, they're not gonna get missed. But if they're set, if they're following us, then they're gonna get missed sooner or later. Cuz some days are gonna be early.
I wouldn't mention anything, but as Bruce said, I think it would be appropriate if you have a consensus, and you feel like being cooperative, you know, start the process.
I'm all, I'm all good. So we'll give you a limit up to order them unofficially.
All right, just as long as we don't back out, cuz it's like forty-five thousand dollars, so.
No, I think he said it would take four to six weeks.
And then the next thing would be, and I'll be in contact with with Mike, I guess, I'm gonna need, these things are gonna come stacked together.
You're putting them together, though.
I have to put them together.
This is not fun, I've done it.
I was hoping, this is what I was hoping.
I forgot to tell you, Raleigh grew up all.
Yeah, is that the the city boys could help us set them all at once?
No.
We buy beer and sticks.
Hey, we'll use our skin loader to unload it with the forks, and you go ahead and put it together.
Well, you just throw them off.
No, they break.
Raleigh, 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 you were talking, you should have been listening. He said he's gonna buy you a stick. Beer and sticks, beer and sticks.
Every one of you, right?
You've never heard that from me.
There you go. No, I mean, we'll get it done, we've done it before, but, uh, it ain't, this could be a lot tougher. Semi. There you go. We'll donate to the FFA if they help us put them together. I brought association, I can see.
Superintendent right there.
How much will we donate to you? Are you part of the FFA?
He's a superintendent.
Well, you used to be the wrestling coach at Humphrey San Francis when I was a little bit.
I remember that.
Still have the. Okay, so you guys want me to order them?
Yes.
I said so, yes.
We'll talk tomorrow. We'll get it done, all right? Thanks, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Okay, you wanna do the one and six-year plan now, Lee?
Yeah, I mean, uh.
Do you wanna go, since these guys are here, do we wanna go?
The one and six-year plan is gonna be just, the next two are gonna be a hop, skip, and jump.
Okay.
Uh, one year, and the six-year plan, we're gonna talk about in a little bit when it comes to engineers and selection of our city engineer, as well as our road superintendent. The one, as you see this, the one and six-year plan is put in front of you in January, where you're passing in February, but you need to take a look at the the roads and the plan, this is how you get your highway allocation, and and determine, you know, the needs, it has to be on there if there's any work to be done. That doesn't mean there's going to be, and there was probably a twenty-year period.
Number eight.
What's that?
Number eight.
I'm just going.
Looks like this one.
Oh, I see ten. She's so good. She gave me, I'm sorry. Um, so what you see is required is going to be the one and six-year plan. The one that's on Fourth Street has been there on the one-year plan for several years and remains there. We added another one that is, uh, would put on the one-year plan for expediency, for lack of better terms, and that is the road between the hospital and, say, Kirk Heart. I haven't told Hart this, cuz I still want him to leave, but if that needs to be done, that would be a very good road to have done as far as gap paving. The rest of them that are yellow, these are just ones I bring to you.
Well, wait, wait, wait. The one-year plan is.
Oh, no, 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 the football field.
Hearts is on the six-year.
Okay, we'll put that on the one-year coming in February, we'll put him up there, but the point being on this one and six-year plan, please don't, um, uh, what was it, put this in a low back burner. Spend the month, take a look at these, go around town, see what you believe needs to be done on the road plan, and we can always put it on and make sure it's there, you know, for the one and six-year plan, so.
Good, that's where I guess they roll here, cuz it's on the one-year.
I, we can't do anything until February, this is a yearly, so.
Well, this is rather attached to your engineer question. Terry Mead is the guy that made this up. Whatever you do on the primary engineer, you're taught that you're gonna hire Terry Mead to do the one and six plan. If you pass his plan, well, then this is all wastepaper, and this is his plan.
Yeah, it, yeah.
Yeah, we don't pass it until February.
So anyway, yeah, and Bruce is absolutely correct, but for right now, take a look at all, you can take and scrap this whole thing. It doesn't, it doesn't really matter, you can take a look at whatever you wanna put. My point is, I want you to go ahead and take.
So you have to have something on paper for your road, Mike.
Right, and both J E O and Mel have these plans.
Yes. Okay.
Number nine, you can go ahead and disregard, it doesn't mean it's over, it means it's beginning. Uh, Josh Sherrick is our agent, and he's working on individuals, you heard Julie talk about it. In our case, we're doing some individuals as well and getting their histories. Uh, he does not have it for tonight because he's working on it. Uh, there may be a chance that we need to have a special meeting prior to the first of February. That's all I'm gonna ask for you to look at. That's all I'm gonna ask for you to look at, there's nothing we can do about it tonight. It's up to you.
Okay, number ten.
Number ten is in your packet, plus you were given a, uh, agenda addition from Miller and Associates, and I'll, I'll do my recommendation in a second here. We have Miller and Associates and we have J E O. J E O pounds this because it's their job every year, and they come with two different things they need. One is to ask you to appoint them a city engineer, and the other one is separate and ask you to appoint Terry Mead as the street superintendent. Um, the irony of this is very simple. We went to Lincoln and told J E O never to have Terry Mead ever submit anything again to us, and you have that. It went from Terry to Brian McDonough. My recommendation to you, based upon the council and the problems in the past with the engineer, and I don't have a problem with this, and neither does Miller, but I would say continue with a lot of the things we do with J E O, continue to have them as our city engineer. Doesn't mean you have to use them, you can go to Miller. But I would like to see the continuity of, because they got all of our stuff down there when it comes to the landfill, when it comes to the electric plant, when it comes to all the things outside of streets. So my recommendation to you is to appoint, uh, Miller and Associates as our street superintendent and J E O as our city engineer. And obviously you have the, uh, right to go all J E O or all Miller.
You guys know how I feel about J E O, so.
I will make the motion to appoint Miller and Associates as the new city engineer and street superintendent for 2018 for the City of Plainview.
You doing them both?
Yep. Miller and Associates for city engineer and city superintendent for 2018 for the City of Plainview. That's my motion.
Do we have a second, Mike?
Before I have a second, I have to ask them now. If they have our, you know, our plans, J E O has our plans, is there any way that Miller and Associates can get those from them?
We, they're ours, they're city property. The problem being is, is, there is no problem. If you guys choose to do Miller, that's fine, we just have to get it from J E O. But J E O has had a long history of our maps and everything, a lot of the mapping we've done, the, uh, transfer station, the C and D, electrical, our water lines. J E O has been, uh, working to do them on a per hour basis. If you choose not to, then Miller and Associates can take over, we can get that. It may be a little bit more stressful to get them to cooperate, I don't know. Engineers don't always see eye to eye. So if you choose to do that, that's fine, you're not hurting my feelings.
Well, I think it's city property, I think it's city property, and I think they're inclined to do it to us.
Well, they have, they'll have a rule that you can't use it for anything, but I would think they could certainly see copies.
Yeah. Bruce is absolutely correct. That's why I made the recommendation on J E O as a city engineer. Just because they're a city engineer doesn't mean that they are obligated to be used. And Miller explained that to you too, just because you have them, we could have Miller and go back to J E O.
And remember, you've been asking them for twenty years for copies of electrical sewer water put on this wall so people can look at them and do something.
We used to have it up there.
The copies are hard to read. And they, they have not been cooperated with copying up maps or anything like that.
I'm gonna second it, just because of the past history of dealing with them too. I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for appointment of Miller and Associates as city engineer as well as street superintendent for 2018 for the City of Plainview. Julie? Tom? Mike?
All right.
Ryan?
Hi.
Motion carries. Number eleven, Plainview Community Building, Miller and Associates.
I see we have a whole gaggle of people out here that will talk to you about the community building and the project. The discussion actually that I have on here from the council is a recommendation that from the beginning is they put this, and the steering committee will talk about it, they're, they're, like, four or five, Jim's over there. Um, the city cannot even probably help out or be much a part of it unless there's something, and I talked to Doc Thor about this, a conceptual drawing and understanding, um, from an engineer. Now, they have engineers on Nucor and Heskey and all sorts of ones, that doesn't do the city any good. Um, if the city's involved, we would have to have the city engineer, which you just appointed, which ironically is Miller and Associates. I didn't know this, but I had a feeling when you go in and, um, we were gonna use Miller and Associates regarding. So the architect has laid out, and I gave to Bruce a, a contract, it's similar to the one that the library had in phases, and I, and I hope you looked at it and saw some.
Yeah, I, I read the thing, it's six or eight pages long. The base contract is a long and involved engineering contract. They tie it to the, to the, uh, community building with the attachments at the back, and they're proposing to work with everyone and come up with some conceptual design sufficient to move forward if you want to for a flat fee of forty-two hundred and fifty dollars.
Forty-two fifty, which I recommend.
And they seem to have a reasonable list of what they'll come and do and meet with people and work on this design and come up with a much more detailed and meaningful design that would give you something to sink your teeth into, instead of just raw speculation about how big this might be and what, what it's gonna cost. So it, it looks like a workable contract to me if the city's willing to pop for forty-two hundred and fifty dollars to get it done.
One of the things, and I'm gonna have Jim come up, or Jim, you can have your committee come up. One of the things is, and Bruce went to Atkinson with a couple of them, and I went to Pender, and after going to Pender, I see where if you're gonna, if you're gonna dream, you're gonna dream big. And I told Doc, I said, I would definitely be all for helping whatever makes this come to fruition, but this is one of the first steps that we talked about the other day, I, I've gotta have that conceptualized. It's really their project, they're in to the city, but if the city's gonna have any part of it, this would be our way of contributing forty-two hundred dollars to kind of make this look what they decide. It'd be this committee that kind of gets together with, um, Nucor and stuff and takes a look at with the architect, so everybody's on the same page. Conceptualized drawing. Doc, you wanna, you got a whole group here, including Seth.
Um, yeah, the steering committee, we've traveled to several communities and, and looked at other buildings, but, uh, are you guys familiar with my relationship with Nucor? Are you, are you aware of what's taking place? The, the purpose of this was, um, I've been for twenty years on the Friends of the Fair Board in Madison County, which is the for-profit arm for the Madison County Fair, the ag societies, the nonprofit arm. Um, I convinced Nucor through, um, just blessings of having the, he was head of sales and now he's a senior VP of Nucor, patient of mine. Um, I worked on his brother and pro rodeo circuit, so I've known him for quite a few years. Um, Nucor donated to enclose the entire practice arena, main rodeo arena, and the food courts in Madison, uh, the, the entire closure, plus box seats, um, all the concessions and restrooms for forty-four and a half million dollars, they donated it. The whole thing, and what they don't make, they'll write a check for. So while the leprechaun was still in the room, I says, how about Plainview? What would you do? Troy Brooks III, who's the senior vice president of Nucor, is the doc, I guarantee you, will sell you the building it cost. So I visited with him many times, and, uh, those of us that were over at Pender, Pender's a seven and a half million dollar building, so if you put it in perspective, that's two quarters of ground. Um, to me, it's not that much as far as in order to get it. I think it's conceivable around here, the donors, I mean, when I look at a community building, the Nucor portion of it, before I forget, um, will save us almost nine hundred thousand if we were gonna put it up ourselves, and I can do better, I'm sure I can, once we have what Mr. Holden's proposing. Uh, I can go back and even do better than that. But the purpose of this building, when you walk into Pender, it's a forty thousand square foot facility, and the rest of my committee will, will take some time to talk to you about it, but it'll knock your doors off. The purpose of, for me to do this is several fold, but if you're gonna have a, a business or a plant or, uh, an industry that wants to come to Plainview, let's just say that I was from a biodiesel industry and I came to Plainview and I was looking for a place to go, why would I even stop in Plainview? And if I did stop, where would you take me to show me the best of Plainview? I'm not running Plainview down, but I'm telling you, this is, this is how it works. Um, Nucor's working with me to actually, uh, get industries that Norfolk is going to miss because Norfolk's industrial tract is too large. So I already have contacts, I'm working on that. But if you can bring somebody in, if you have someplace to take it, and, and it's hard to visualize, because you guys haven't been to the Pender facility, Mr. Holden can, did, and everybody else will comment on it. When you walk in there, it's just, it's just awe inspiring. I mean, there isn't anybody that wouldn't play ball with us if, if we had that representation. It has a basketball court, it has a whole big fitness center, Anytime Fitness. We've discussed having apartments for the seniors that aren't ready for the nursing home but wanna move to town. We're short of housing, uh, we can use it for ag, uh, the FFA can use it. It has the ability to have huge farm shows, it's three basketball courts in size inside with a concert area. Uh, it seats fifteen hundred people in that area, so it's monstrous. Um, is it overkill? No, you know, it's, it's a matter of do you wanna save the community? I, I am not native to the community, but I probably will be buried here. So I'm trying to make a mark for the community, to make the community better. That's what this is, why I'm doing it. Uh, the opportunities there with Nucor, uh, man, that doesn't come around a hard like ever. So I hate to see us miss out on it. So you guys, you know, that were there, Jim, you know, tell them what you think.
Yeah, we definitely need some community input, uh, you know, just like the library, you have to have people willing to donate. We looked at the donation board down there, and it was unbelievable, well over a hundred donations. And they went from half a million dollars to a hundred thousand to fifty thousand on down to a hundred. But people, and they spent a lot of years getting promoted and finding out what the community wanted. Um, yeah, and there will be some, some excesses, you know, maybe we'll have more basketball courts in the but, uh, that's, that's part of the decision-making, you, you guys put up with and follow through with it and try to get as many people in the community supporting it as possible, because we're gonna need everybody's support. Um, but it's like they said, if you aren't moving forward, you're moving backward. And especially if you're wanting to help keep people in the community and bring more people back. Uh, you know, there's plenty of alumni that love to anticipate coming back here. Uh, they can find the jobs and now with computer and doing it in computer right from home. Um, you know, the sky's the limit, so. And, and that building was fantastic, that was the best one that I've visited. Susan has done an excellent job of getting us to use the internet and finding out there, there's some real excessive community buildings around. This one was not, it, it was very practical. Yeah, some of the stuff is large, but I, I think the community really is it. It, it is something to shoot for, strive for, see where we can end up with.
So who's next, you, sir?
Yeah, I can. Uh, you know, I think our plant was kinda fought, fought for into this community. I think some other communities would have liked it, and I'd like to think that we brought something to the community. Um, I think this is a great opportunity, and, and I really, I really don't think, um, you know, like Doc Thor's, uh, energy towards this thing is incredible, and we've already seen what he can do with the car show. Um, I don't know, I think it's a great opportunity. I know the board at Husker Ag is, is behind the project. We're contacting some of the other, uh, larger agriculture companies in the area and trying to see what, what interest they would have. I think we have some use as, as employees at the, at the plant, we would have some uses for it. Um, but again, I think it's, it's just, it's just you need to, you need to have something. We've got the plant clear on the edge of town or not even in town, you really need something to showcase, and and from what I know, it sure seems like you're trying really hard to turn around your rural revitalization program, and I think this would be a crowning achievement on it, so I'm, I'm behind Doc, he's got a heck of a program here, so.
Tell them what you think, Rick.
I think it was amazingly impressive to watch through it. Uh, I agree, Doc is a wonderful promoter of this whole thing. We have no place to have a wedding dance or anything in town. We would rather go out of town to, not that I'm gonna get married again, but. But no, I, I, it's, the community needs it, it really does.
I think one thing that we saw from Pender was, um, how their building can pay for itself. That's one thing that a lot of the community will come back and say, okay, so you built it, but how are you gonna pay for it? And they had avenues of revenue built into their facility from the, their child development center that the hospital was paying for to Anytime Fitness, that was in there to even the village of Pender was leasing space. And their leases went for ten years at six dollars a square foot, so they found a way to make that building pay for itself, um, so.
Has the location been determined on this, or?
Our, you know, the, the, it, it, that can change, like I said, it took them seven years. I think the initial board and the initial thoughts, where you have a ground out here that where the old, um, mobile homes were at, the Jim Moret property and Ashop property, they're just sitting there. And I think in the original, um, conversations, they were willing to work with this community center concept and use that. Now, if you're gonna do it and do it right, we'll be looking at bigger than that, but that area is what, unless something's changed in between that time, but I think that's kind of the land you were looking at. And it's blighted, by the way. I don't wanna bring that up because that's a shit project, but we'll talk about that.
I, I wanna add one more thing. When we first started the, or when I first got on this committee, um, we were talking about all the communities around that already have something like this. I was, I was amazed at the amount of communities that you can go to. You just name some communities around northeast Nebraska, around Nebraska, you probably got a fifty percent chance that they've already built something like this. We went to Atkinson, Albion, Pender, Al Creek.
Tilden just built one.
I mean, they're coming up everywhere.
When's that one?
So, I mean, it's not an unheard of project.
I would say, you know, folks, it's gonna take, obviously, a tremendous amount of ambition and courage to move, move forward on something like this, and I think a lot of folks, a lot of communities, a lot of organizations, you know, we, as much as we need to include everybody and listen to everybody, um, as soon as some people, they're not, you get a little bit of pushback and, and you'll get a tremendous amount of pushback on this from certain constituents, and it, it slows the momentum, and all of a sudden you find yourself, you know, coming to, you know, maybe a grinding halt, and then it takes years to come back around. You know, I think that, that there's a start here and there's an opportunity that we may never get again in our community, and I, I just think now is the time to, for the city to throw its support behind this and to start to put these pieces in place to build some momentum and move forward with this. And we owe this to the future of this community, this isn't for us, we'll be long gone, and this thing will be here for generations afterward. We, this is an investment in our community and our future, and if we don't start investing more in Plainview, I, you know, it's, I just, it, I worry a whole heck of a lot about, you know, what generations to come are gonna have to look forward to. generations to come are going to have to look forward to in Plainview. So I just, I just think this is an investment that will reap dividends for generations to come and kids and families twenty and thirty years from now will thank you for doing this, for having the courage to do it.
Where do we need to go from here?
My request to the council and after having Bruce somewhat looked through it and getting his okay as our attorney, I am asking the council to make a motion in second to pass to bring Miller and Associates to get together with these folks, put the conceptual drawings together, make it a physical representation of what the entire group wants to put into it. It may change fifty times, but we've got to start somewhere and without that conceptual drawing and renderings, we as a city, I mean, that's got to be a start.
That's our forty to fifty?
Forty-two fifty for phase one, I believe it's called, and I can take that out of.
Forty-five twenty.
Forty-five twenty, whatever you, I know I looked at it. Forty-five twenty for that, taking out the Economic Development Fund, which is what it'd be citizens of this town. I mean, it's just a perfect fit.
I agree.
Please.
Make the motion to go forward with Miller and Associates to get together with the
Steering Committee. Which Doc Thor is leading. No, you don't have to put that in.
Four, was it forty-two?
Forty-five twenty.
Forty-five twenty.
Okay, Ben, we have a motion in second to go forward for Miller and Associates to get together with the Steering Committee to move forward on the community building for the, what you call conceptual drawing.
Conceptual renderings, drawings.
In the amount of forty-five, four thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. Do you think? Judy?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, thanks very much.
Dr. Earl, thanks for that, nice vote. A politician like, I'm going to be outdone.
Okay, number twelve.
This is left on here, Bruce, we're not pushing you any, if it's nothing there to talk about, we just keep it going, we put it on every month, so I don't know if we've got something on one twelve.
Your question last month was, can you tear down the garage? If we're going to look back in here, paperwork and see.
I did, and we have not. We need to actually meet, so no, we have not done that. Christmas came.
Right. To refresh your memory, Denise has not owned that thing anymore. Not get in with this group. Now, we could contact them and try and buy it if you want to, see if they want to negotiate down. They took it for the tax sale, they did the tax sale certificate. And they have some thousands of dollars in it, buying up those tax sales certificates. And they want their money back and they want interest, of course. Now, the decision was made a year ago that that was a little rich, the city didn't want in that far. But otherwise, if somebody wants to buy it, they need to contact those people and buy it from them, they own it. I called the county last week or last month and talked to them about why this file remains in the district court with no deed because they're scamming the county out of the real estate taxes, leaving it with the city's name on the real estate record. But they bought it in this district court tax foreclosure. And the clerk of the district court told me she would call the county attorney and see if she could even do anything. I have heard nothing more about that, but that's on the county's head. You know, they should be getting taxes. And if they would get after that and make them complete that foreclosure or that tax sale, they would be getting taxes or the taxes would be running. And so that needs attention, but that's on the county attorney. I can't. That's going to stay the situation unless we open an negotiation to try and buy the thing out. I guess I can ask the county attorney a bit and tell him he should make them get after this and put it back on the tax roll, but we have no leverage there.
There's two issues there Bruce brought up and I'm glad he did too, and that basically is where we're at. And I didn't want to, I didn't know exactly where Bruce's stance was, but the two issues, one is we have an individual who may be interested in it and we can pursue that and talk to him next month. And the second part of that is we need to have the health board meet sometime in January, February and kind of get a.
Continue to put pressure on them, although if we tear down the house, I mean, that's part of the issue there is somebody kind of wants to renovate the house, right?
That is my.
I mean, the little dinky lot isn't worth much. But the house interior is still functional until it's not. Eventually the roof goes bad and Lemon take over, but I.
Well, I think we might be at that point.
Well, it could be, I've not been in it for a year.
The health board, did they just act on the garage?
Here's the problem with the health board, I think the health board is unanimous, but if you remember right, we met independently, one without the other, and I think we just need to have all three sit down.
If you're going to take physical action on somebody's property, you want your paperwork right.
Because I mean, I guess you probably want to relook at that again on that garage part if somebody's interested, sure as hell, hey, go in and hit the garage shop.
They don't want the garage. It's got this much garbage all the way through the garage.
And perhaps all the way through the basement.
No, it wasn't that bad. Not that bad in their minds, but. Well, the guy who would like to buy that house would probably be interested into the lot to know that the city owns it, probably buy that one as well. That is also a city law.
I would think if he would call any people that held the tax sale, they don't want it. They want some money.
They want money.
I mean, that's got to be a negotiable price and it's a private deal right now. If he can just make a deal with them, he can own it for weeks.
Send it, so we tell him to get hold of him.
Yeah, I think this next month would.
You've got paperwork at the city with naming that outfit in it, but we can give him copies and he can get in touch with them.
Asset, yeah. So I think that's the direction, if we go health board, just get it together, that's you and Mike and Bruce Yost and myself, you know, City Attorney, it's just you three.
You can increase their discomfort, if you will, but if the city puts money in it and tears stuff down and holds it away, well, then you've just got no money in it. Be nice, the buyer would just buy the thing, it's going to have to, right?
Bruce, is there a way that the city health board gets together and go in there, put pressure on them, say, hey, we're tearing the house down, it's not fit? You got a chance to sell it or we're tearing it down? You got nothing.
I mean, you could create that pressure on one side and let the guy go do them on the other side, be no harm in that.
That goes back to the pageant, which we need to do and have it full fledged according at the health board.
Is that all we can say about twelve then? All right, fourteen, discussion action on approval of zoning recommendation on Frederick property.
This is a little weird, to say the least. I was contacted by Heather McQuarrie, she is the County of Pierce zoning administrator, and she had an issue. And the issue was a, was a sort of what I would call a lot split. And you have the small version, I apologize, that's the best you're going to do for a small print. This is the large version, the MyLars. And what happened is the county, Kim Frederick, went through the process to take care of, he's got a tree line on both sides of his property out there. He's selling part of that to Darren Zolton. But what he wants to do is keep the tree line, they planted those trees, so he's moving the existing tree line which was on the part he wants to sell so that it's inclusive. So it's basically, it's just a strip. All the work was done at the county level with their zoning folks and getting together and they come to the realization, Heather says. It's not ours to determine. So I talked to Don Tasselmeyer about this, who is the president of the, or the chair of the art board. I didn't go to the zoning board because he and I both felt, coming to you, you are actually the board of adjustments. We've established that a long time ago, that what I'm asking for you is an approval of what the county started and do it on the proper level with the city and so I can send it to the, back to the County of Pierce. They've signed it, Bruce, all of them, just kind of giving you an idea, we got the last one, but all those shots, maybe some of them are necessary, but then they left the administrator, city clerk and the mayor on the big sheets.
Because I don't see anything on any of this that I got in the city.
We're coming up by the dump on Main and Lo.
On the, yes. Northwest corner out of the dump. Not Fourth Street, Ninth Street. It's Kim Frederick's house.
It's got to end up in the regular lot split for Plainview.
And that's what I.
We're not talking about the house they burned down, it's the one over on the dump or like Ninth Street.
It's their home property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So basically what he wants to do is move, I'll use this in layman terms because that's all I know, but he wants to move the property line to include the line of trees on the west side.
Exactly. And the east side, both, that too, for his farm. He wants to keep it, so managing his properties like this accordingly, all he wants to do is, yeah, just widen it up.
They're just shifting the lot.
Yes.
I guess I don't, from a physical standpoint, I don't see why the city would care if I want to move that lot line. But to have it done correctly, the only time we can get to it here is get it to the planning commission. I don't think you can just waive it by here.
Okay, Don, I didn't know.
I think you've got to get it to the planning commission, get the recommendation from the planning commission and then pass it.
You can come back here with the ask, what do you mean?
They're stuck with the procedure, but somebody had their head in the wrong place and went off with the county to do this when the county had no authority to do it. It's a lot split within the city's zoning jurisdiction. So the Plainview Planning Commission needs to consider it and recommend it and then the city needs to pass it.
Then what I would recommend is table and that, and I can do that, that was no problem. But as you know, Don and I discussed it and we weren't sure of the, not necessarily the procedural, but you got a lot of six year the board adjustments, I didn't, you know, we just kind of took the shot. Because this happened in the middle of December, I think you call.
I don't think we can compad the procedure and in fact, they're recognizing, maybe the planning commission is guilty.
Can you? What are the? One mile.
Yeah, from the corporate, and then both sides, it's attached to that court.
So you're, so at this point, as long as, you know, you're aware of it, we'll bring it back with a formal, whomever, Don and like I said, I hope this is Dale Baylor, but I'll get a meeting with them together. We'll bring it in February, there's no hurry, I talked to Ken, so.
He's buying this part here. It's just, right?
Oh, he's not.
He wants this dotted line.
Yeah, he's wanting whole force.
Not the trees.
Yeah.
Mine's part of the two point.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ken and Denise are just keeping this part here, just this corner.
So you want to go bottom, just some discussion action.
Okay. Fifteen, discussion action, resolution number five to six-three, appointment to the Power Pool Mean and Ace alternate representative.
Yes, it's been brought to our attention, you know, as we talked about many, many times, we are board members. We are considered on the governing board of NMPP, Mean and actually Ace. So we normally have put down names. The last name they had was Tim Cupra. They recommended that it be the replacement, which is Raleigh, but they also told Courtney, rightfully so, that if you want to bypass naming a name, you can name a position. And that makes sort of sense, the city superintendent should be the alternate on there and maybe at some time we can even change it to the city administrator instead of being my name, so as the delegate.
So this resolution is just changing wording?
That's it.
I'm stating that the city superintendent going forward.
Instead of an actual name.
And you'll never have to do a resolution ever again.
Okay, I like it.
Unless you're the position.
I like easy.
Unless that position is.
Let's change that position name.
Yeah.
I can eliminate it, I guess.
Yeah, or eliminate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, maintenance.
Maintenance.
Need to.
Don't add.
Need to vote on that?
Yes, you do.
Make the motion to pass.
Resolution five sixty-three.
Resolution five sixty-three for a Mean and Ace committee and NMPP.
Power Pool Mean and Ace alternate representative.
Second. Go ahead.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of resolution number five sixty-three for the appointment of a Power Pool Mean and Ace alternate representative to state the city superintendent. Judy?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Do you want to go last, last?
No, absolutely.
Does she want to go, anybody in the audience?
We've got people here, I don't know what they, I don't have them over here, if you want to say something.
At this time, we'll open up to the audience, anybody have anything to say? Judy?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'll have a little bit of warning.
Don't worry about it, if you didn't see it tonight, you can worry about it tomorrow.
Lisa?
Yeah, I guess, I was just curious, because you guys blew by that road paving thing, like, is there, I mean, because last year, I don't remember if it was last, this fall or last fall, but we had talked about putting Fourth Street on the five-year plan and you just told, said that it was only on the one-year plan and I'm just curious when that switched.
I would honestly say, and I have to remember who might have, go back and add, but I know procedure wise, I would never put that back on a six-year. Once it's on a one, it just remains on a one forever. What's that, there's no vote, I mean, it's, what the one and six-year plan is, is kind of more of a roadmap and anything on the six-year plan can become a one-year plan overnight. It's kind of set your priorities on what are you looking at and I got to tell you, this council typically hasn't looked at it in that regard anyway. You took the projects as they came, so you've got one year, I put that, Darren's gone, but we had talked about the road going between the schools and I bumped it up. But it could go back to the six and if you still wanted to do it, it would just go. I mean, there's no minor reason, it isn't that you're mandatorily having to sit on the six-year, but the state needs to have some roadmap of what you are looking at in order to get your highway allocation dollars for each year.
It could be on, correct me if I'm wrong, it could be on the one-year plan for forever and never get done. It's basically an allocation and I think you are right.
Because we talked about it, what Darren had.
It's not going to be quite done in the near.
That's the only reason I remember that time, is that's when it happened. We talked about it and you guys said that since we weren't going to have a plan on one year, that we could put it on a five-year or six-year plan.
Well, if you truly don't intend to do it within the next year, why would you not move it back to the six-year?
You could. But I'm going to tell you, if it arises, it comes up, it will just go to the one-year.
Well, you can still modify the plan. Anyway, I mean, it just makes them uneasy.
Well, since we changed the order, since we changed the order, so it's just we got to do it anyway.
No, yes and no. This plan is not necessarily JEO's, although JEO takes ownership of it, Miller already has it. So they're already looking at the same, they probably will give you a little better map. I don't know, maybe.
Mike, is this what's sent into the state then?
Yeah.
You just gotta have something on paper that you're gonna do.
You have to have approval of a one-six-year plan. No, it can't be, well, it could be, but we have to pass it in February, it's not due until the end of February, uh, and typically that's when municipalities go through it, we just start early so you get a chance, I'm asking you to take a look at it.
So we could readjust with which ones we want, want us.
I, I could end up, for example, that little road that was on the one-year plan between Jake Peterson and it used to be Denny, Herder, over there, that was on the one-year plan for more than fifteen years. It's now finally went to the six-year, but it's still there. So, yeah, I mean, I have no problem, we can take that down, actually, I might want to put hearts up, I mean, this is what I want you to look at, that's all. It's not, it's stone at all.
Don?
I guess I'm just curious as to what the plan is, I mean, if we're literally kind of, I mean, how many times have you told everyone else around me, Mike, that it's gonna happen, like or not?
I think.
Eventually it will.
I get it, but are you guys gonna just push this into happening in the next couple of years? It'd just be nice to plan ahead a little bit, considering it's gonna cost us fifty thousand dollars.
I think the secret of that is the district. Once that paving district is established, which is why Mike said, this Mike, don't blame me, yet, this Mike said, it's gonna happen. You know, sometime in the future, the development in going that direction, I may be retired and bald by then, but I don't know.
Or just be tired.
Baldur.
Baldur. But I, I think that's why, and I have no problem pushing to the six-year plan for, and I understand Lisa, for some comfort, I guess, my, my part, I was saying, let's just say it's on the six-year plan, and the council, and there's a big push to do Fourth Street next year, because it's on the six, doesn't mean we have to wait six years to do it, it means you might go on that district and start that process in next year. Nobody said anything about it, nobody's pushing anything, nobody, you know, with the plan, um, I, it's, it's kind of nice hearing somebody come in, because for years, all we had was Mr. Ashburn and a few others saying, why don't we ever do anything? And we've actually done some things, so that makes, I understand.
Fourth, North Fourth Street was on the original one of the eight paving districts to start with.
It is, it is district.
Yes. We just didn't do it.
When we did, like, the two-year, three, a couple of years ago.
Right.
Yeah, it's a past district, I mean, that, and districts don't go away.
Right.
So it'll remain that way, but, you know, I said, who knows when, I'm not, I said, I, I don't think you can take a district away, can you, Bruce? I don't think you can take a paving district away.
I'm having a hard time understanding what you mean.
We passed.
Project is not active?
It's a not active project, but the district, it was established as a paving district.
I have to see the paperwork again, I don't recall.
So, anyway, that's, that's all I got.
Anybody else? No? Bruce?
The only thing I got for you was sarcastic remarks about the manor administrator contract from last month, and Julie got a three thousand dollar in change raised, but could not trouble herself to let me know that we needed to type up a new contract. She brought this thing to you, scratched out the date with an ink pen, I had never seen it, scratched out the amount with an ink pen, and wrote in a new amount, and then had you re-sign a contract that says this agreement is effective January one, twenty seventeen, and shall continue for a period of one year. Now it's all nicely signed up again, because she wouldn't trouble herself or waste a hundred dollars to have me try to get it right. So that's not my contract, and it's all screwed up, but I take no responsibility for it. You can have it fixed if you want, or you can just let it lay there, but she's getting paid according to a contract that says it expired at the end of December. It seems.
Your pretty much was at the board meeting, and that's kind of what she said, that instead of going to you and paying the power of much money was costly for you.
It'd be horrible to get it right, and I'm just.
Without bringing.
So that's what she told her board president.
I bet she did, I envisioned it that way.
I was there, I witnessed it.
We have been doing this for years, Bruce, and by the call, um, you have always had the contract, correct?
Well, we've typed it up and gotten it.
Many, many years.
Basically, she said that she couldn't type it up and print it up, and you had to do it.
Money now. So, you do, we'll do with that what you please, but her contract is quite a mess right now.
Would you like me to speak?
Well, it's not even valid.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to speak to Julie about the invalid contract?
Tell her she's working under, not working under a contract?
I, I would love to. Talk to her.
Well, if she's gonna scratch it up, she ought at least clear all the pages and change all the dates, but, yeah.
She should have done correctly.
I, I'm a little different than Bruce, Bruce is being kind, I was horrified that it was brought out without any knowledge of anyone who should bring it right except two people in front of a council meeting to have it signed, because your board had already signed it.
Well, I'll go over. Do it, but then everything's.
Well, I guess.
That's what I said.
Okay.
Do it.
We had talked about changing the order of the agenda, putting all the administrators' reports and everything at the bottom, I know that, that's at the school board meeting last night, you may do that as well, kind of sever everything to the last. So, you know, we discuss and.
We, we've talked about it, it's really not a major issue for us, so it's whatever you do as a council wish, we're kind of doing it anyway.
I know.
We just make Raleigh stay long.
I'll go over there.
You gotta be here anyway, right?
Ben, no. So it's been two years, you know?
It's been two years already?
Time flies when you're having fun.
So your review's coming up?
Plus you can get some extra hours in town tomorrow night, maybe Friday.
Probably Saturday. Hey, I'm gonna.
Probably said this to the last.
Yeah, he said he wanted to do this last.
Yeah, I'll just do. I'm gonna be holding on it.
Okay, you're just gonna rebuttal him? Okay. Mike?
All I got, unless I've missed it or forgot or whatever, we had a sale at the library.
This is next Tuesday, right?
No, it's about two weeks from now, there'll be a big ad coming out in the paper tomorrow, and again the next day. So far, I guess that's something to comment, I meant to bring that up and point out to you that I have the ad in place and coming. Do you want me to trouble to run ads in other communities? I just took it as kind of a Plankview issue, hopefully somebody around here will pay attention. But the notice was published, you might have seen that there.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
We had to wait thirty days from the last publication of notice, and now the sale is coming. But I've just physically put in an ad today, tomorrow, today. Yeah. And I, frankly, I was thinking of running it in Osmond, and when we finalized it today, found out that Osmond closes their advertising Monday afternoon, so we could put it in Osmond next week, or we can do nothing, or we could put it in the World Herald for five thousand dollars.
Actually, to piggyback on Bruce, it's his comment, you asked him, but I was gonna ask you, Bruce, typically, it's an auction setting, are you going to attend?
I'm gonna run.
The officer of, you know, do you need to be there, or is it you and I?
You're welcome to come if you want to, but I figured to run the sale.
Because typically, it's usually an officer of the city, and that would be either.
Yeah. I mean, I've, I've done it over the years, a dozen property auctions, and just take bids in writing and walk around the room and talk to people.
Courtney volunteered to go down with you.
Well, that'd be good too. It's gonna be here, though.
It's here.
We're not going anywhere too fancy.
There's no heat there.
Well, as far as the advertising, we're just gonna need to advertise, because we got a minimum of ten thousand, don't bring that.
I wish you were for sale, so.
Well, that's right. I suggested to me in a theory, you want to get the word out, if you want to get a good sale, but I think we've got, we know there are some contacts out there that have been snooping, and there should be some bids, I think there will be some bids, we'll see. But I, we can take the advertising however far you want, but so far I was just going to do Plankview and Osmond, and Osmond would have me next week if it all.
And is that the library or here, though?
Here. That's what the ad is gonna say, in the city council chamber.
Person through, I mean, I don't know what it costs, or whether, if you want it to go broader, or why not throw it in the North Fork paper?
I, like I said, I meant to bring up the question, if you want to go any further, there's plenty of time, we could hit it on a weekend ad in North Fork, I mean, not to hit a broader area.
How about North Fork Wednesday?
I would say North Fork, because it's gonna.
Five hundred bucks.
If we run a display ad in North Fork, it'd be bigger than that.
Why don't you just put it in the classified? That's all I was thinking.
I wasn't thinking sale.
Library for sale, ten thousand minimum on such.
Put it on Craigslist?
Plus goes to everybody, even if they, if they don't get a bid.
Craigslist? Craigslist?
No.
I'm gonna wipe things off. A lot of people look on there.
You want to put something, a couple hundred dollars worth in North Fork, or what do you wanna do? I mean, if you want to get a broader.
It's gonna come from the sale anyway, so yes, I mean, you're not, um.
Yeah, what does that mean?
You, you sell it for ten thousand, and if we spend ten thousand on a advertising campaign, who cares?
Get it from Kena. Get it from Kena.
I don't have it.
Oh, I don't know if there's anything set in stone yet.
Okay.
Julie want to know about the R C and D movement here, or not?
If anything is progressed on that.
I'm sorry, I'll, I gotta report, do you want after me, or am I going?
I'll go last, I'm gonna get yelled at, so I'm gonna go last.
Whoever you would like me to go after the rest of the.
You're done. Mike, or Brian?
I was just gonna ask him about the water, or yesterday when I saw, and then the cones over here, if that was, if that's for your.
I'm calling to you today.
They're cheap. Go ahead, Mike.
A couple things just to clarify on the report, one, I hope that always, January twelfth, thank you for the year two thousand seventeen, January twelfth is our party, and hope to see everybody there that can be there, and hopefully R S V P. I wanted to hit my Courtney, she don't, she's chucha. The R C and D building is temporarily, it's not on hold, we're still progressing to go forward, they've got a decree, and they were doing a one-year extension to kind of stay out there as long as they can afford it, with the idea proceeding forward, now before they go forward, they're still, as you requested, come back to the council with plans to see if it can work. I think the ultimate goal is to be here, but there's not this immediate danger of going out now and ten below zero and trying to move them over here, they're gonna kind of wait and see, and use the time wisely, so I, that's where we're at with the R C and D. Second thing I want to talk about here is the camera system is now up, it is, uh, well, it's awesome, and to be honest, I cannot believe that we didn't do it before. What's broken?
It's not broken anymore, it's. You broke it? Broke the camera?
I did not, I never did. I, I will say, I, I, there's a couple.
They're going all the places that, the.
Not yet, correct?
They were bidding to do?
Pretty much.
Pretty much, not, they're still working, they've got a couple of them at a time, we're up to seven cameras right now, which does include, um, we had an issue, the cameras worked good, I'll, I'll talk about the, the other issue in just a second. You know we have the nitrate, we're working with D H H S, so that he can talk about too, Daryl, of course, was another one that we've been working on. You have a couple of ways to do this, and watching, you know, the city administration across Nebraska and actually across the U S, uh, Derek, if you haven't noticed, there's a tendency, and what I'm trying to do more than anything, is to remove ourselves administratively in the city as far away as I can from the police department, to let them respond to the mayor and do that, that's why the new numbers came in, the camera systems, uh, that's not as easy as said or done. One of the things, you have a choice as a, a mayor council system, and I know Bruce will kind of understand, he can go along with this too, but just because we set that standard, you have two options, one, I either remove completely and not get involved into some of the things that I am very strongly, as an administrator, not as Mike Holton, as a strongly as administrator, seeing problems. I can't go forward with certain things unless they are handled in a proper manner. Now, you can do that as, as a mayor and a council, you can assign the administrator to be over the city, a lot of people do it, and, and completely enclose in everything that goes on, including the scheduling of the police and everything else, I know where that would go with this police department, if I took over the scheduling, payroll, and everything else, and, and I, it's never been the way to go, there'd be a resistance. The other way is to simply separate out, and hopefully they would cooperate as a police department does. The cameras are being put in, we put a camera in with great resistance in the break room in the electrical plant inside to look at the two doors as they enter from the west, and the door that goes into the plant to the north.
Both doors. Both plant and tree stores.
Both plant, that's what I meant, just plant, I mean, so you got the one to the west, the one to the north, and then you've also got another north door, but that, that was already included in what are our things. Called this morning, and there's resistance, and, and that, that fires signals to me as an administrator, like I said, this isn't personal, we're both fifty-five years old, Bruce and I, we butted heads before, this isn't the new, something's different, and I can't quite, I, I don't want that, there's either gonna be a complete separation, because I have issues where they're calling over to our administrative staff and asking things that normally I won't allow anymore, I mean, I just, I won't, there's a complete cut in the dirt, that in order for this to work, uh, he, they, as a police department, are under your control, don't, I'm trying to be very, because I'm on camera, and I don't find this being said, because this has to be said sometime, they don't play well with others, okay? And I can't be an administrator doing the community any service if things can't be handled in a very cooperative, non-rebuttal way, and, and it is, right now, it's a process where, i- if, if the gentleman that's in, at the top of it is burned out and ready to retire, I understand, it, it's, he's been doing it for thirty-seven years, and I understand, but it's not fair to the city, it's not fair to the administrative staff, it's certainly not fair to our, um, staff that works out in the snow, and, and that, we're gonna be needing that cooperation at its fullest, there's not to be the question of, well, was this done or not done? Mike Napperstaff, you brought up something today, and I, I just want to complete this, and I know everybody wants to get out of here, but this is important to me. I want it very well understood on camera, those speed signs, I never had anything to do with.
No, I know that.
And, and I know, you've always been supportive, but it's ended up, I had cleaned up the mess with the last contact, when they talked about it, he simply denied ever having anything to do with it. A company that he ordered from brought these signs in that we can't use, you can't do that, I can't do that, that's not doing my job, it was an illegal thing to do in the first place, and when I called the Department of Roads, it was very clear, I work with them, you know, and they're saying, what are you doing, you can't have this, we've sent it back, I called today, and we're looking to get it back, I don't know if we'll ever get any money back, I don't know if we're gonna lose five thousand, I mean, one way or another, we're gonna get a sign or something in replacement, but, once again, it's not
You didn't start the process.
The administrative process, we want it done, I want it done, you want it done, we'll get signs done, but we have to do it the correct way. My goal for two thousand eighteen, and I told the individual, um, in question, I said, I want to start out two thousand eighteen on the right way, I said, that means you don't need to be so stubborn, and he walked out the door with a very stubborn, um, attitude and comment and go from there, but we got to be able to work together. And he walked out the door with a very stubborn, um, attitude and comment and go from there, but we got to be able to work together. This duck paddling on the water BS does not fly with me. I know when I'm there, I know what I have to do. I know what's required in the city of Plainview. And when I tell you that the city is probably in the best financial shape and the best administrative and working shape it's been in years, I don't want that to be bogged down by the conversations on the other, because there is a support system out there for him and that group. And I, and I'll tell you what, Tyler, you're not even very cooperative. When I have a question brought to me by our administration about a fax machine that they want, and the person in charge says, no, it's only the operator's error and we'll use the old one. I've, I've told you before, in the budget process, the budget is set up very loosely to allow salary overage and cut everything else out, so it makes it look good. It's a bad budgeting style. It's been bad thirty years ago. It's still bad today. And I have no problem talking to him. We are butting heads. And I'm not gonna win without having the support of the council and Darren, you two, I'm bringing all you together, because there is something wrong in Oz. As simple as that. And he's gonna listen to this and that's fine if he wants to see it, but if we don't correct the situation, you do have a couple of good officers, and Bruce can be a very good officer when he wants to be, but right now he is up against a wall. He is bucking it. And that means you. And he'll go as far as he can, and I can't have it in the city. That's where I've gotta draw the line. I don't want that inclusion with the, uh, calling over Department Health and Human Services. That's why we put the new, the numbers up. We're there. And I'm gonna keep separating as we go along the way, unless something changes or you want me to do something different, so. That is probably my, um, nine-thirty. I'm sorry, I took that long, but something's gotta be said. And I don't like taking him out and I wish that he had, I, he was here and we could sit and talk, because I do not like to take people behind their back. So I'm glad it's recorded if he sees it. I got a problem. The system is not working the way it is. I can't do things as simple as dog ordinances or snow removal ordinances or sirens that I'm told it's not my, but my job. You go fix the siren. I've never touched that siren a day in my life. That's an emergency siren set up years ago that the police department's always had control of. Not my job. We have a good staff. You have a good staff. And that's all I'm gonna say. I, I, I want them treated well and I applaud the Raleigh. The last time you went on the stormy rule, you have to agree. And Darren, I appreciate you saying what you did, but that, that staff did a hell of a job. All you had to do was go to Norfolk or Sioux City or anywhere around here to see what really crappy jobs they can do. He had it all cleared. It was in two-thirty in the morning. And I don't want them running out because somebody's getting by with things over and over and over again, and I got a staff that's doing the right thing and under your control. It all started out with cameras. Good choice. Nice choice to the, it is beautiful. Come on over anytime you wanna see it. It's not.
Make sure you wave.
Oh, I smiled.
Yeah, Dr. Tom smiled. That is. And it's been a bad day for me today of having to fight that fight. It's my, it's our city council, my plan, our issue as administrator, and I caught total hell on it all day long.
He was fully aware though of being.
No, no, Julie, it wasn't.
He didn't know where they were gonna be here.
Exactly.
If he was to stay for the, the, of the meeting, he would have been aware of that, like we've suggested to him time and time again.
Maybe that's what we need to do is put, uh, like you said.
And make sure he's here for the entire meeting.
Do the, the department here, the, these reports down at the bottom.
That's why I just said that, what was it, November when I was, when we had the, so when I was working on Neely and I went and we did have a policy statement, all of this. Well, other than the roll call, but the claims and payroll and reports was the very last thing.
That was a great suggestion.
I will be done.
The only thing is that though is what you're gonna run into is, you'll just show up about eight-thirty.
Well, that is something that Darren, you talked to him about, that he needs to attend the meeting and needs to be there from the beginning to the end. That way, if there are issues, we can address them as the city council, mayor, city administrator and the police department.
I agree.
And if anybody in the community has a concern or whatever, he can address it if it's directed towards that department or whatever.
Yeah.
Or you know, just something.
He's an elected official. He should be here for the entire length of the meeting. Raleigh, you're here because.
You're here because you're the department head.
No, because I was told.
Okay, go ahead. You have more, sir.
Do you guys have any questions on the report? That stood out that I'm kinda scared of Tom right now.
I was just gonna ask about, well, not just yesterday, but then last week, the cones just over here in front of the plant.
The one in front of the plant, and that was that last week, two weeks ago, you and me texted. I don't know. There's been a leak over there. We don't know if it's water leaked, if it's groundwater. It comes and goes. It's there in the winter, here in spring, it's gone. We chipped the ice away today and I don't see any volume increase, so we're just.
It's like my backache.
Yeah, it comes and goes. We gave it to Advil. We'll see how long it goes.
So it's more of a safety thing that.
Yep, we're just, I didn't want people driving on it and somebody getting in a wreck and suing us and. Yeah, I ran over a cone. I'll order anyone tomorrow. Um, the one on First Street, we had a water main break Sunday, I think it was, yeah.
Sunday afternoon.
Sunday afternoon and we came in and looked at it, determined, we'll just wait till Monday. We had it fixed. I think the water was backfilled by three o'clock. So it went well. It was a ground shift. The pipe cracked all the way around, so it's what happens. Huh?
Stress fracture.
Lack of maintenance. No, it's a stress. Yep, it was the hot and the cold and it, they happened. Norfolk's had three already. Let's see.
Oh, did you get, uh, Ves or Spotlights ordered?
They're in the trucks today as of two fifteen. Spotlights will be, were picked up tomorrow, but Ves.
I did. I'm just checking.
Hey, I found them. I didn't buy any, but I will buy, buy mine tomorrow. It'll be like twenty-four dollars from Bongers if you wanna check it next month.
There is a street light out on our, on Northwest Street. And the only reason why I bring it to your attention, because I know you have a million other things to do, is when I was coming up that street tonight, there's a semi parked on one side and then Hubbard's cars are on the other side.
Where from your house?
It's to the south. It's across, um, like Mark and Melissa Hubbard.
It's like Ilter and West.
Yeah, and.
I'll drive by that.
And I just, I, there's a semi there and then there's cars on the other side and no light and, and the reflections. I just hate for there to be an accident.
Yep, nope, I got that one down.
Thank you.
Um, we did have N C P D in last month for that Ninth Street outage. Um, and like Mike said, we ran Friday per their request. And I said, per their request, not ours. We did them a favor. Remember that when we talked about the agreement next month. Um, we did run, we did run the cat generator on the twenty-eighth, so we knew it would run and hold up the town, so I, it wasn't a big issue.
Did, on that cat and Raleigh, they get that computer in or whatever?
Yep, the, it, it's in a hundred percent full working shape.
That cat's humming.
Yep. It was actually overloaded on Friday, so we did start a superior to defer some of the power off of it, just so we didn't have an issue with something. Because we know our luck. It's, it's a good time. Um, like on the transfer, like Bud's was talking about, we've been taking two loads a day to Jackson. It's just getting, like he said, out of hand. It honestly is. And it has caused wear and tear on the trailers. I think we had a seven thousand dollar repair bill for two trailers last month, so. I'm all for them totes. We started a report back in, uh, September, October. We hardly get anybody to go out there individually. It's Key in the Morning, Pierce, Bud's, that's about it.
Well, why would you if you could dump unlimited stuff?
Amen. And, and that is also a little bit, gonna go play into their delay of being off on the routes is, the more they pick up personally. We itemize this to these totes. Being in the business, I did it once, you get on a better timescale, it just goes a little faster.
You know, part of that probably could have been deflected, you know, like, I've seen mattresses and all.
Oh, they take.
We didn't, there's no mattresses. They don't pick up that kind of stuff.
See, and, and, and we can actually probably talk with Bud's in our new agreement, give them a list of things that they shouldn't take and make the property owner, bring that stuff to us. Because that way, we're gonna be money ahead on that stuff, because if they take a TV or a mattress or whatever, we can charge them on our end more for bringing it individually than we can for them to pay the four dollars.
Put a TV in the.
No, no, but, no, that's what I'm saying. If it's still sitting there, I'm not gonna tell you they do and I'm not gonna tell you they don't, but you're not supposed to. But we can charge them on our end a little bit better and just, we can get our.
Just education.
Yeah, and that's all it comes down to. And when we get, get this, uh, R C and D recycling center thing going, I'm hoping the trash goes the other way and he's got a problem taking recyclables, so to be honest with you. That's where I hope it goes.
We're, yeah. We're out there, mercy, but it's gonna, recycling will help.
Yep, and I, I would go with just being within my town down there. They got two rates. They got single rate, like for elderly and stuff, and then they got a family rate, and then they got their commercial rates. I would keep that in mind, kinda like you were talking. One bag elderly woman or my family of six, which we filled two of them totes.
Single person.
In a week, so, got a lot of garbage, got a lot of kids. Just, uh, food for thought. Nat might know where this one's going. Um, we might wanna look at as a city to protect ourselves for maintenance and, and responsibility is for us to get out of owning a service line from the water main to the curb stop and letting the property owners take care of everything from the city water main to their house. Just like, just like we do with the, uh, city sewer right now. It's our city sewer main and it's their service line that comes from their house all the way to the city sewer.
And we've had this discussion and basically what you're looking at is, um, cities and municipalities are going away from having that curb stop and only responsible for the mains. Obviously, the larger cities have had this for years, so we're not talking about the Omahas, that's automatic. There is no curb stopper. The Norfolk's, you know, around here, Norfolk is the main. Anything from the main to the house, including the curb stop, belongs to the house or to the owner. Uh, we've always been pretty good. We're pretty generous. I mean, we're, we go clear up from the main to the curb stop wherever it's at. And then from the curb stop on is property, or that's the owner's service line. So we've always taken care of, uh, curb stop. That's creating some issues.
Cause then you own it and you can turn it off.
No, you can still operate the curb stop.
Nobody's saying if, if an owner has.
No, if that's my, if I paid for that baby, you ain't shutting it off.
No, there's.
You gotta walk into that technical.
There is.
Before you get coming off.
The city can operate.
It, it's just.
If I paid for it, I own it.
It's a matter of research.
I mean, if I own it, I'm sticking it on my property. You're not coming up my property then. You'd have to, you'd better think about that.
You'd have to set up the service contract a little differently.
If I'm an owner, it's just going on my cross the sidewalk.
Then how do I shut your power off if it's attached to your house? Then how do I shut your power off if it's attached to my house?
I've got a generator.
Apples and apples now.
I mean, you better think about that, because if you're gonna make your customer own it, I'd put it across the sidewalk. That's on my property. You're not shutting it off.
We'll get you some information.
What would be your reason?
I mean.
What would be the reason for it?
It's the way, it's the way.
It's the new norm.
It's, it's actually waiting municipalities handling.
I think I heard, I think I heard a younger, you might have been an older, being nice, younger gentleman say, if you're not moving forward, you're moving backwards.
No, I get that. I just didn't know, I have a reason.
Well, you're gonna, you got, you got plumbers in town that were taking money away.
If you don't have a general contractor, you're talking about getting a general contractor, right? If I have a water leak, that's my problem. So I gotta go back to the main and fix all that.
What we need to do more than anything, Mike, is just put everything out. It's all research.
It's only talk right now. There ain't no information. You did? It must be close to bedtime. Talked to Tom about the house that we newly acquired, thanks to Mr. Curtis. The fire department's gonna use it for training for the next two to three months. Come the first of March, we're gonna, and I talked to Hoffman just yesterday, we're gonna tear it down. So then it'll be an empty lot and we can go ahead and do with it as the city ceasefire. What stuff? Just letting you know on Friday, uh, take this for whatever it is, from the time that we got called from North Central to say they wanted us to come around the plant, our city crew was here in less than thirty minutes. We were waiting here for them to tell us they were ready to go, so we could shut the power off and go. You were kinda alluding to something to that earlier. Just take it for whatever you want, just letting you know, that's kind of our little unwritten rule, is try to be here in under thirty minutes. So, last thing I wanna do is say thank you to you guys for an awesome year, like Mike said. And from the guys, we thank you for the totes. Everybody appreciates them.
Is that your totes?
You're right there, buddy. Right there, buddy. See that? We appreciate, we appreciate it. Other than that, I got nothing. You approved it. I can go to the table. Personal preference.
I would have to say, if you agree with Mike, he did an excellent job, Lucas, and I would have to say the best I've seen in years. They reached me out of the board. I know they're gonna make a job.
It's because I didn't even sleep.
Well, I stopped in Monday, because I had been in Lincoln and Sioux City, and that was absolutely horrible. I mean, there was, there was probably three or four instances of slush in Sioux City. And we got here and streets were clean.
You have to do good. Keep up the good.
We're trying.
We have it all done for Friday, six o'clock.
I want them to be done.
It just depends.
Your trash might be on, your trash might be on Saturday.
Motion to adjourn.
Maybe on, maybe on, uh, when you do stormy rule, on the, the few, through streets we still have in town, since we're prolific with stop signs now. Primarily the southbound where it meets Highway twenty, West Street, First Street, Third Street. Scatters some gravel at those stop signs.
Get it.
West Street is probably the worst one.
Cause of that little hill.
Any street that they, people can get some speed on. I'm looking more at like hill streets. If it's flat, it's not a big deal.
Fire real is in First Street.
Yes.
From the manor, kind of. You may stop, you may not.
Yeah. And that one's kinda narrowed in because it's got those goofy curbs there with, with the, uh, um.
Parking.
Storm drain and stuff.
No, we didn't do that. I didn't even.
I went all the way through that highway the other day.
Where at?
Main Street.
Yeah, slow down. Slow down. If I hadn't seen the signs, they'd be flashing.
Normally I do come off pretty fast. I didn't.
He just admitted a tape, he ran and stopped.
Yes, he did.
I had my brakes on. I'm not kidding you. I crossed my lucky stars, because I slid all the way through the highway to the other side.
You better slow down.
And then when I requested that the cul-de-sacs not be forgotten, it only needs to be plowed with reds. It got hit three times in three hours.
I wanted to make sure you were taken care of.
My daughter was crabbing about it. I didn't want it. I just wanted it plowed. I didn't have to be three times.
Are we, what's it go through once?
I'll make it up for last year.
Well, she's, he came by and then Kurt came in and then here comes the backhoe and I'm like, oh Lord, there's aren't many tar left on the joints. He's just scraping everything off. So it's like, okay, there's, there's happy medium you can hit. There's overkill.
You only had three out of four of us, so you're doing pretty well.
There's, there's overkill and then there's, you know, doing it just right.
We don't like those two cul-de-sacs just.
Oh, I'm sure you don't. And I, I try to make sure everybody pulls out of the way that makes it easier for the guys to get in there. That's the least I can do. That's the least I can do.
I appreciate it. I got nothing.
I got nothing.
Oh, I won't be here at the next meeting, now you know.
Court date?
Anniversary.
These guys on anniversary.
Same thing.
She was here last year on the anniversary, we're not doing it.
Somebody motion to adjourn.
I second it already.
You second it, remember motion in second to adjourn, Julie?
Aye.